Unless it's a bad morning, then you don't have to say anything. Roll call, please. Dick.
Thank you Chair Bone. Chair Bone.
Yeah, I'm here.
Supervisor Bushnell.
Good morning.
Supervisor Royal.
Here.
Supervisor Madron.
Present.
And Supervisor Wilson is absent.
All right. Could you please do the salute to the flag?
The flag of the United States of America. To the Republic of America, for which it stands, one nation, under your heart, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adam CEO.
Good morning.
CEO, what are you?
Good morning Chair Bone. There are no modifications to the agenda this morning.
Really? Look at that. Okay, we've got a few proclamations and resolutions, and what we're going to do is we're going to present them, one through six, one at a time, and then we're going to allow public comment. You can come up and present your item, whoever the spokesman is, and then we're going to have public comment on it after that. So... Was that?
So you're allowed to vote, is that how it is?
Yep, and then we'll do public comment after that, so we can... Anyway, the first one, we're going to take care of the front row. You guys even got Jared here. New job in law. All right, who's getting this? The one that had the shortest commute. Anyway, this is a proclamation of the Board of Supervisors, County of Humboldt. Many Azorian Portuguese immigrants migrated to Humboldt County, California in the early 1900s, and have since been a vital part of the economy and cultural diversity of the community. And whereas in 1924, members of the Portuguese community established an association in Ferndale, California, named the Eel River Valley Portuguese Hall Association, to main community connections amongst its members, and to preserve the culture of the Azorian Portuguese people in the Eel River Valley of Humboldt County. And whereas many of the families who have lived in the community and contributed to the association through their presence, donation, volunteerism, continue to live in this community and carry on the celebrations commemorating the cultural, historical, and religious festivities of the Azorian Portuguese people. And whereas the Festo de Esperito Santo first celebrated on the island of Tassaria... How close was I? Azores in 1492 memorialized the historical, cultural, and religious events involving the story of Queen Isabella's charitable acts of feeding the poor in Portugal during the famine of the 14th century. And whereas the Portuguese community continues this act in honor by welcoming all community members to a free community meal of traditional Sopa do Esperito Santo, Alcatra, Linguisa, and sweetbread... I got the linguisa because I forget that every time. ...on the weekend of the celebration. Whereas the people of the local Azorian Portuguese community crown a queen, little queen, in full court to commemorate the act of Queen Isabella crowning a common person to reign over the festa, celebrating the end of the famine, which is probably one of the coolest things I've ever been to, but I digress. Now therefore it be resolved that the County of Humboldt Board of Supervisors recognizes the Azorian Portuguese people, community, and its unique culture, and commemorates the 100th Festo de Esperito Santo to be held on the 18th and 19th of May, 2024, in Ferndale, California. You can applaud.
Is this on? Okay. We're going to do the picture first. Is it on? We're going to do the picture first.
You guys want... Get up there. There you go.
This is my new role?
Oh, nice.
Ah, there you go. A new Nikki's... A new Nikki's Latin.
We should... We should give the... Thank you.
All. Okay.
Are you ready for me?
Uh, no, but go ahead.
Well, good morning and thank you honorable board members for the recognition and the opportunity to speak. I'll make this brief, but as I was working on this, we were working on this proclamation, I realized there are a lot of people in the community who don't know what the Azores is, so I thought I would just share a little bit about that, and, you know, just again mention our celebration, our festa, that's going to be happening on the weekend of May 17th through the 19th of this year in Ferndale. So, for those who are not aware, the Azores is an archipelago composed of nine volcanic islands located roughly in the middle of the Atlantic Ocean. It is currently an autonomous region of Portugal, but like many regions, has ethnic and cultural influences from other populations. This is part of what contributes to the rich culture of the Azorian people. As you heard in the proclamation, local Azorian immigrants mostly migrated to the U.S. in the early 1900s, bringing experience in farming, winemaking, and more, as well as bringing the traditions like the meal that you'll experience on the weekend of the 7th, May 17th through the 19th. Where we'll have an Azorian street fair on Friday, traditional beans and linguisa meal on Saturday, as well as a dance, and traditional sopa and alcatra on Sunday, as well as the crowning of our queens and the parade. So I welcome everybody in the community, we welcome everybody in the community to join us in Ferndale on that weekend. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And it is, it is a great meal, and then the auction, and the crowning of the queen, and everything else, a lot of fun. Jared's got his work cut out for him. Okay, now we have a resolution recognizing Humboldt Arts Council and the state local partnership program, brought to us by Supervisor Madron.
Thank you Chair Bone. So is there somebody here today to accept this? All right, we'll, we'll just read it into the record, and then we'll get the copy to them afterwards. Whereas Humboldt Arts Council, the nonprofit countywide arts council founded in 1966, is the leader in building appreciation of, participation in, and support for the arts and arts education throughout Humboldt County. And whereas Humboldt Arts Council is committed to recognizing merit within its organization by electing board members, hiring artists, and employing staff that represents our diverse community. And whereas Humboldt Arts Council serves as owners and operators of the Morris Graves Museum of Art and in the historic Carnegie Library, and provides for its standards of excellence, professionalism, and financial sustainability. And whereas Humboldt Arts Council operates and develops programs and services designed to serve the full range of constituencies in Humboldt County, including incorporated and unincorporated areas, and people of ages, backgrounds, talents, and abilities, and people of all ages, excuse me. And whereas Humboldt Arts Council actively fosters broad community access and participation in the arts, both residents and visitors, through the Humboldt Arts Council website and the Palette Magazine. The Palette Magazine is one of Humboldt County's most comprehensive sources of information about arts and cultural events, including public art displays throughout, located throughout the county, and disseminates this information regularly through its active social media presence. And whereas Humboldt Arts Council primary, its primary purpose is to help ensure that the arts are part of every child's experience and education. This is accomplished through partnerships among the Humboldt County Office of Education, education programs at the Morris Graves Museum of Art, and through the vehicle of an annual month-long countywide arts festival for families and children in March, the Youth Arts Festival. And whereas Humboldt Arts Council strengthens the professional capabilities of artists, arts, art, arts organizations, arts-related businesses, arts educators, and municipal arts agencies through a regular schedule of technical assistance workshops and mentoring programs, as well as offering consulting services in the areas of cultural planning, grant-making, and public art programs to local government, higher education, and the business community. And whereas Humboldt Arts Council sponsors the annual celebration of the arts, which celebrates exemplary annual achievements in the arts, and pays tribute to decades of service and commitment by the county's artistic and community visionary, visionaries. And whereas Humboldt Arts Council engages in effective strategic partnerships with businesses, arts, government, and education leaders and organizations to advance Humboldt County as a creative community, now therefore it is hereby proclaimed that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors supports Humboldt's Art, Humboldt Arts Council in its goal to promote the arts and renew its designation as the county's official local arts agency and state local partner, therefore enabling it to seek funds from federal, state, local entities, and from other private sources to help support its projects and initiatives. And we thank the Humboldt Arts Council for everything that it does. So, thank you.
All right. And then we'll move on to the CAST team, Child Abuse Services team. I think we got, I think we have a crew here from upstairs. This is brought to you by Supervisor Bushnell.
Does someone from the CAST team want to come forward, or all?
Who's all?
Okay.
Nikki thought she was going to get out of it somehow. Do you like that? Almost everybody got the memo. You were supposed to wear black, I guess, but...
And me too. So, whereas the impact of sexual assault and child maltreatment can, sorry, cause severe and long-lasting physical, emotional, and psychological consequences, the experience can be devastating not only for the child, but also for the family and friends of the child. And whereas sexual assault and child maltreatment crosses all ethnic, cultural, socio-economic backgrounds, the tragedy of child abuse can be, can cause disabilities, poor health, depression, poor academic performance, alcohol and other drug problems, and abuse, and abusive adult relationships. And whereas it is recognized that child abuse is an adverse child experience, known as ACES, that has a lifetime effect on the survivor, and studies have shown that stability, support, and healthy relationships have a positive impact on the children impacted by ACES. CAST promotes stability and support for the child, family, and caregivers through the multidisciplinary team approach. And whereas the Child Abuse Service Team, known as CAST, a multidisciplinary team comprised of special-trained individuals representing child welfare service, district attorney office, Humboldt Domestic Violence Service, law enforcement, mental health, North Coast Rape Crisis Team, tribal agencies, was created to reach one of the most vulnerable populations in our community, children who are victims of sexual and physical abuse. And whereas CAST is a nationally accredited child advocacy center through the national children's alliances. The office provides a child-friendly setting for forensic interviews to occur. And whereas since October 1996, the Child Abuse Team, CAST, has conducted 3,752 comprehensive forensic, forensic interviews, and this coordinated response has been successful in the criminal investigation and the prosecution of child abuse cases. And whereas the effective intervention of the Child Abuse Service Team, multidisciplinary approach to child abuse investigation has reduced the number of interviews a child abuse victim must undergo. And whereas CAST interviews may also be used to interview witnesses of violent crimes, and can be used in cases where there are allegations of neglect. And whereas the citizens of Humboldt County benefit from the coordinated services provided by the Child Abuse Service Team. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors hereby expresses appreciation to the members of the CAST team for their 28 years of service to sexual and physical abuse victims of Humboldt County. So I've often, in the past, said, I was a victim of spousal abuse, and my children had to testify against my ex-husband, and the CAST team did the interviews. My daughter was seven years old, and it made her, it made it bearable for her, and it made her feel protected, and I will forever be grateful to the CAST team. Thank you.
(applause)
Want to get the medal, huh? Don't want to be drunk.
No, you, no, you, no, you.
Good morning. So I, again, I just want to say thank you for this opportunity. It's a very important program we have in this county. I, myself, has been actively involved for the last 14 years, and I feel like it offers one of the best services for, in the next generation, for the citizens here in Humboldt County. So again, I appreciate this on behalf of the CAST team. I thank you very much.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you so much Supervisor Bushnell. Thank you, the board, to take your time, honor, and recognize the CAST team and the work that they put into making this community the best place that it can be. Ideally, we wouldn't have a need for the CAST team and the CAST services, but we do. We conduct approximately 100 interviews per year, so there is an ongoing need, and this is, board is very aware, ACES is a tremendous issue that this county needs to address head-on. And this is a tremendous resource to do that. So, thank you for taking the time, and I'd also like to express my gratitude to all of our team members. So the agencies that are involved, the tribes that help and participate, North Coast Rape Crisis Team, Department of Health and Human Services, the District Attorney's Office, all of the law enforcement agencies that participate and help us make the investigations the best that they can be for the benefit of the children that are involved. Thank you.
Yeah, and I do have to say, it's kind of weird getting a presentation from you guys without Joyce being up front, but, I mean, and it was so seamless with Nikki taking over, which was great, and the new office upstairs, I should call the Moser Building, because, I mean, I did not, 12 years of having her every day going, hey, when are we going to fix that upstairs for me? When are we going to... I had to walk in the rain today, Rex, so... It's a beautiful facility, and it's what the kids deserve. So, thank you Supervisor Bushnell for bringing that. All right, we're going to Victims' Rights Week, brought together, brought by me. It's kind of funny, this is 42 years ago, and 28 years ago, we brought the CAST team. I'll read this, I'm trying to pull it up right now, unless I got it. Might even have it. Proclamation of the Board of Supervisors, whereas in 19, since 1982, the District Attorney's Office, Victim Witness Office, has provided services to thousands of crime victims, witnesses, and their families... Yeah, you guys can all come back up, I'm sorry. Take a look, people, these are the guys doing the work you don't normally hear about, but they make it seamless, so we can do what we do. Crime victims, witnesses, and their families each year. And whereas victims of crime and their loved ones often face severe financial, physical, and psychological trauma. And whereas victim witness advocates and other staff are available to answer questions, help victims and their families cope with the trauma they have experienced, as well as the often complicated criminal justice system. Whereas an effective and fair criminal justice system must recognize the rights of victims and balance them with those of the accused. And whereas all agencies are encouraged to strengthen partnerships to coordinate direct and referral services to crime victims. Whereas all citizens are encouraged to increase their awareness of the impact of violent crime, the needs of crime victims, and the vital services of the DA victim witness has to offer. Now therefore it be proclaimed that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors recognizes April 21st through 27th as National Crime Victims' Rights Week, and expresses appreciation to the District Attorney Victim Witness Office for the 42 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Humboldt County.
Are you ready for me?
Uh, no, but go ahead.
Well, good morning, and thank you honorable board members for the recognition and the opportunity to speak. I'll make this brief, but as I was working on this, we were working on this proclamation, I realized there are a lot of people in the community who don't know what the Azores is, so I thought I would just share a little bit about that, and, you know, just again mention our celebration, our festa, that's going to be happening on the weekend of May 17th through the 19th of this year in Ferndale. So, for those who are not aware, the Azores is an archipelago composed of nine volcanic islands located roughly in the middle of the Atlantic Ocean. It is currently an autonomous region of Portugal, but like many regions, has ethnic and cultural influences from other populations. This is part of what contributes to the rich culture of the Azorian people. As you heard in the proclamation, local Azorian immigrants mostly migrated to the U.S. in the early 1900s, bringing experience in farming, winemaking, and more, as well as bringing the traditions like the meal that you'll experience on the weekend of the 7th, May 17th through the 19th. Where we'll have an Azorian street fair on Friday, traditional beans and linguisa meal on Saturday, as well as a dance, and traditional sopa and alcatra on Sunday, as well as the crowning of our queens and the parade. So I welcome everybody in the community, we welcome everybody in the community to join us in Ferndale on that weekend. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And it is, it is a great meal, and then the auction, and the crowning of the queen, and everything else, a lot of fun. Jared's got his work cut out for him. Okay, now we have a resolution recognizing Humboldt Arts Council and the state local partnership program, brought to us by Supervisor Madron.
Thank you Chair Bone. So is there somebody here today to accept this? All right, we'll, we'll just read it into the record, and then we'll get the copy to them afterwards. Whereas Humboldt Arts Council, the nonprofit countywide arts council founded in 1966, is the leader in building appreciation of, participation in, and support for the arts and arts education throughout Humboldt County. And whereas Humboldt Arts Council is committed to recognizing merit within its organization by electing board members, hiring artists, and employing staff that represents our diverse community. And whereas Humboldt Arts Council serves as owners and operators of the Morris Graves Museum of Art and in the historic Carnegie Library, and provides for its standards of excellence, professionalism, and financial sustainability. And whereas Humboldt Arts Council operates and develops programs and services designed to serve the full range of constituencies in Humboldt County, including incorporated and unincorporated areas, and people of ages, backgrounds, talents, and abilities, and people of all ages, excuse me. And whereas Humboldt Arts Council actively fosters broad community access and participation in the arts, both residents and visitors, through the Humboldt Arts Council website and the Palette Magazine. The Palette Magazine is one of Humboldt County's most comprehensive sources of information about arts and cultural events, including public art displays throughout, located throughout the county, and disseminates this information regularly through its active social media presence. And whereas Humboldt Arts Council primary, its primary purpose is to help ensure that the arts are part of every child's experience and education. This is accomplished through partnerships among the Humboldt County Office of Education, education programs at the Morris Graves Museum of Art, and through the vehicle of an annual month-long countywide arts festival for families and children in March, the Youth Arts Festival. And whereas Humboldt Arts Council strengthens the professional capabilities of artists, arts, art, arts organizations, arts-related businesses, arts educators, and municipal arts agencies through a regular schedule of technical assistance workshops and mentoring programs, as well as offering consulting services in the areas of cultural planning, grant-making, and public art programs to local government, higher education, and the business community. And whereas Humboldt's Arts Council sponsors the annual celebration of the arts, which celebrates exemplary annual achievements in the arts, and pays tribute to decades of service and commitment by the county's artistic and community visionary, visionaries. And whereas Humboldt's Arts Council engages in effective strategic partnerships with businesses, arts, government, and education leaders and organizations to advance Humboldt County as a creative community, now therefore it is hereby proclaimed that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors supports Humboldt's Art, Humboldt Arts Council in its goal to promote the arts and renew its designation as the county's official local arts agency and state local partner, therefore enabling it to seek funds from federal, state, local entities, and from other private sources to help support its projects and initiatives. And we thank the Humboldt Arts Council for everything that it does. So, thank you.
All right. And then we'll move on to the CAST team, Child Abuse Services team. I think we got, I think we have a crew here from upstairs. This is brought to you by Supervisor Bushnell.
Does someone from the CAST team want to come forward, or all?
Who's all?
Okay.
Nikki thought she was going to get out of it somehow. Do you like that? Almost everybody got the memo. You were supposed to wear black, I guess, but...
And me too. So, whereas the impact of sexual assault and child maltreatment can, sorry, cause severe and long-lasting physical, emotional, and psychological, psychological consequences, the experience can be devastating not only for the child, but also for the family and friends of the child. And whereas sexual assault and child maltreatment crosses all ethnic, cultural, socio-economic backgrounds, the tragedy of child abuse can be, can cause disabilities, poor health, depression, poor academic performance, alcohol and other drug problems, and abuse, and abusive adult relationships. And whereas it is recognized that child abuse is an adverse child experience, known as ACES, that has a lifetime effect on the survivor, and studies have shown that stability, support, and healthy relationships have a positive impact on the children impacted by ACES. CAST promotes stability and support for the child, family, and caregivers through the multidisciplinary team approach. And whereas the Child Abuse Service Team, known as CAST, a multidisciplinary team comprised of special-trained individuals representing child welfare service, district attorney office, Humboldt Domestic Violence Service, law enforcement, mental health, North Coast Rape Crisis Team, tribal agencies, was created to reach one of the most vulnerable populations in our community, children who are victims of sexual and physical abuse. And whereas CAST is a nationally accredited child advocacy center through the national children's alliances. The office provides a child-friendly setting for forensic interviews to occur. And whereas since October 1996, the Child Abuse Team, CAST, has conducted 3,752 comprehensive forensic, forensic interviews, and this coordinated response has been successful in the criminal investigation and the prosecution of child abuse cases. And whereas the effective intervention of the Child Abuse Service Team, multidisciplinary approach to child abuse investigation has reduced the number of interviews a child abuse victim must undergo. And whereas CAST interviews may also be used to interview witnesses of violent crimes, and can be used in cases where there are allegations of neglect. And whereas the citizens of Humboldt County benefit from the coordinated services provided by the Child Abuse Service Team. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors hereby expresses appreciation to the members of the CAST team for their 28 years of service to sexual and physical abuse victims of Humboldt County. So I've often, in the past, said, I was a victim of spousal abuse, and my children had to testify against my ex-husband, and the CAST team did the interviews. My daughter was seven years old, and it made her, it made it bearable for her, and it made her feel protected, and I will forever be grateful to the CAST team. Thank you.
(applause)
Want to get the medal, huh? Don't want to be drunk.
No, you, no, you, no, you.
Good morning. So I, again, I just want to say thank you for this opportunity. It's a very important program we have in this county. I, myself, has been actively involved for the last 14 years, and I feel like it offers one of the best services for, in the next generation, for the citizens here in Humboldt County. So again, I appreciate this on behalf of the CAST team. I thank you very much.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you so much Supervisor Bushnell. Thank you, the board, to take your time, honor, and recognize the CAST team and the work that they put into making this community the best place that it can be. Ideally, we wouldn't have a need for the CAST team and the CAST services, but we do. We conduct approximately 100 interviews per year, so there is an ongoing need, and this is, board is very aware, ACES is a tremendous issue that this county needs to address head-on. And this is a tremendous resource to do that. So, thank you for taking the time, and I'd also like to express my gratitude to all of our team members. So the agencies that are involved, the tribes that help and participate, North Coast Rape Crisis Team, Department of Health and Human Services, the District Attorney's Office, all of the law enforcement agencies that participate and help us make the investigations the best that they can be for the benefit of the children that are involved. Thank you.
Yeah, and I do have to say, it's kind of weird getting a presentation from you guys without Joyce being up front, but, I mean, and it was so seamless with Nikki taking over, which was great, and the new office upstairs, I should call the Moser Building, because, I mean, I did not, 12 years of having her every day going, hey, when are we going to fix that upstairs for me? When are we going to... I had to walk in the rain today, Rex, so... It's a beautiful facility, and it's what the kids deserve. So, thank you Supervisor Bushnell for bringing that. All right, we're going to Victims' Rights Week, brought together, brought by me. It's kind of funny, this is 42 years ago, and 28 years ago, we brought the CAST team. I'll read this, I'm trying to pull it up right now, unless I got it. Might even have it. Proclamation of the Board of Supervisors, whereas in 19, since 1982, the District Attorney's Office, Victim Witness Office, has provided services to thousands of crime victims, witnesses, and their families... Yeah, you guys can all come back up, I'm sorry. Take a look, people, these are the guys doing the work you don't normally hear about, but they make it seamless, so we can do what we do. Crime victims, witnesses, and their families each year. And whereas victims of crime and their loved ones often face severe financial, physical, and psychological trauma. And whereas victim witness advocates and other staff are available to answer questions, help victims and their families cope with the trauma they have experienced, as well as the often complicated criminal justice system. Whereas an effective and fair criminal justice system must recognize the rights of victims and balance them with those of the accused. And whereas all agencies are encouraged to strengthen partnerships to coordinate direct and referral services to crime victims. Whereas all citizens are encouraged to increase their awareness of the impact of violent crime, the needs of crime victims, and the vital services of the DA victim witness has to offer. Now therefore it be proclaimed that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors recognizes April 21st through 27th as National Crime Victims' Rights Week, and expresses appreciation to the District Attorney Victim Witness Office for the 42 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Humboldt County. (applause) Hi kids. How we doing? Slide on in. What are you doing there?
Can't say.
One more shot. I'm not going to say it.
Thanks. Thank you Supervisor Bone and the board for this, reading this proclamation into the record. Standing next to me is Nikki Miranda, who Supervisor Bone just mentioned, and she, she doesn't want to speak, and I, I think that, that really is telling of what a wonderful leader she is for her team of advocates upstairs.
Mark wants to know how you did that.
And, and the reason is, because, to be a good advocate, for victims in particular, you're working with people who, who have experienced a loss, and one of the most important things that each of us can do for people who have experienced loss is to be there and to listen. So those are two of Nikki's superpowers, that she really models for the benefit of her entire team, and that radiates out through the community and serves those within our community who have been harmed, who have suffered a loss, and hopefully, through her superpowers and her teams, that loss can be reduced at least a little bit, whatever Although, they're very gracious when we do get that far to help us. So, I'd like to see Michelle Bushnell, and with the support of the rest of the supervisors, see that periodically, there is, there's an opportunity for people to come forward with their issues. And then, if there is a report made, it needs to be followed through with support for families. As far as child abuse is concerned also, child abuse is a terrible thing that happens. I think it's, in working in the schools, I personally didn't see the response as quickly as it needed to be. But worse than that, possibly worse than that, is that there are many, many people in Humboldt County, I know of many people in Southern Humboldt, that were victims of crimes when they were children, and it was never addressed. It still has not been addressed to this day. They're homeless, they have drug issues, they have problems. I think you should revisit that. I think you should go back to those people that were not properly cared for when they were younger and are really struggling now, and making our community struggle along with them. So, please find those people. There's some very obvious ones in Garberville, and if you would go forward and help them get on disability and get resources and get housing, it would make everything better in Southern Humboldt and in Humboldt County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, 6655, star six to unmute, and you'll have three minutes.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Great, hi. My name's Nicole Norris. Thank you so much, Michelle, for honoring Ed Denson today and his legacy. It completely warmed my soul, and I know it would have warmed Ed as well. I'm still recovering from the loss of my, not just boss, but mentor and dearest friend, so forgive me. But, yeah, I got to spend the last nine years of his life with Ed, working alongside him in his law office, on the medress, lawsuits, producing radio shows, at K-MED together, and organizing various efforts. It's really difficult to speak about Ed, there's just so much to say, right, as we all know. One aspect I wanted to bring to everyone's attention today about Ed, that I found the most honorable, and I think this meeting actually proves, Ed was a peacemaker above all else that he did. I'm sure he was like a fighter for the people's rights and property rights, but everything he did was coming from the police. He needed to make peace with his alleged adversaries, even though he didn't believe he ever had any. I saw this in his presentation and humor in the courtroom, even during appeal hearings, the five that I got to go to with him, where, you know, matters were especially tense with millions on the line. He would still crack jokes with the planning and building department, and the judges, and everyone, just to ease tension, and hopefully get a better outcome for his clients. No one was Ed's enemy. And, yeah, sure he disagreed with like policies that had, you know, cannabis cultivation demonized over the years, and then the chaos that unfolded after legalization with the abatement program. And he was also very disgruntled about the misinterpretation of cannabis laws, that seemed to pervade every department and agency we spoke with over the years after legalization. But he handled all of these disagreements, certainly, but with integrity and grace. And it was really inspiring to witness, and I just wanna bring that to the forefront today, and say I hope Ed's legacy lives on. I hope we all remember what Ed was fighting for till the very end. Affordable housing, including the Teeny House Village ordinance, including supporting the Yee Haw commune. And he also advocated, one of his last letter to the editors for campaigns was based on the premise that until there are no more homeless people, we must get over the dream of up to code housing for all. Ed also supported the Institute for Justice lawsuit and the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals being decided on as we speak. And, yeah, thank you again, everyone, for honoring Ed today.
Thank you very much.
Really looking forward to work.
Thank you, I'm sorry to cut you off, but thank you, but that was a great tribute to him, so thank you very much. Nikki, anybody else?
No, Chair Bone, we're good.
I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. I just wanted to recognize the Wolf Family Trust donation to the Nurse Family Partnership in Humboldt County, for the Humboldt County Department of Health and Human Services. These donations that people, obviously, they appreciate the health and human services and the public health, and so it's just really appreciated, and I wanted to recognize that. And also, we'll make a motion to accept the consent calendar.
Second.
Sim moved to second. I would like to mention item seven, the memorial for Gene Cox, was a sheriff who died in 1982 with his gun in the glove box where he usually kept it. On duty, he was helping his father-in-law at the Epti Trailer Park, and mental health issues were just as strong back then, and somebody confronted him, and he was, he was the proverbial county sheriff. Big guy. Big guy like Dave Renner, like our current sheriff now, they were filled out a little bit more than the one we got now, but Dennis Lewis was the only one who broke the mold, but he was a, he was one of the good guys. Grew up here, his family's still here, and when you leave here today, you'll see a tribute to him right here that's been in the foyer of the courthouse since the 90s, I think. So, it's a big deal, and it's long overdue, so. With that, I just thought I'd explain that. Is there any other comment on the consent calendar? Supervisor Rowe?
I think some meetings, we always have a very robust consent calendar, but in some meetings, I think there's a lot of really great items that point to collaboration around some of our biggest challenges, and this one is no different. Looking at Technical Assistance Fund, collaboration, you know, with cities and communities throughout our county. So, I just wanted to note that, you know, I appreciate, even though we don't speak to every item individually, I really appreciate the work that went into all the items that especially are focused on community collaboration and, you know, finding ways to augment and support the work that's happening all over the community.
Thank you. With that, Nick?
Thank you, Chair Bone. We'll start with you.
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
And Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 4-0.
With one absentee.
With one absentee.
Okay, now, we will have public comment on, you're up, non-agenda items.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for having me. The key point is, to fix the homeless problem in Humboldt County is definitely a thing that can happen. I have an idea to start a nonprofit, putting people to work, cleaning litter off the streets, with a program dedicated to immediate housing and personal financial achievement. And when I, you know, I, when I hold a baby in my arms, I know that we don't do this alone. We all have to do this together somehow. Holding public employees and public entities accountable for maintaining civil actions and civil rights in our community, create positive ideas and actions with the alliance of a mastermind group. Unfortunately, I have to say that I've just witnessed civil rights violation brought upon me, because I think the neighbors got the wrong assumption of me, I guess, because I've learned how to adverse possess under Civil Procedure 325 houses, and I think they think that I'm just going to go there and just cause a bunch of ruckus like everybody else did, but that's not the case. My idea is to create a legitimate income for myself, and also help out the homeless problem in Humboldt County. I've started a page of 2021 called Acarima Soldus, it had like 170-something followers, which I cleaned up streets all across Humboldt County, and just in the dream that I could start a group to come up with good ideas to help out Humboldt County. I read a book called Think and Grow Rich, and it changed my life, by Napoleon Hill. And it really did, it changed my life on positive thinking, and how he took a mission with Carnegie to find out why people failed and find out why people had success. And I learned a lot from that book, and it's got me to this stage right now, talking to the board of supervisors, which I never would have done in my past, never would have done this before. And I asked for help with the EPD, because I've been arrested already twice for trespassing, we'll leave that for the court, but I already have court documents, and I've also sent Supervisor Natalie Arroyo information of my court proceedings, and I'm an honest American trying to make an honest living, and I'm not doing anything wrong. And I just have to, I have to say, I'm just ashamed of what's going on right now, because I'm not a criminal, doing something as a criminal act. I do not have the best past, but I'm doing the best I can.
Alright, thank you very much. Next.
Thank you very much, Supervisors, and I was tantalized and enthralled by the previous comment. My name is James Chaffey. I was at your last meeting, which was April 9, two weeks ago, and after that meeting, I had what I consider a very interesting experience. After the meeting, I went out through the north side of the building, which was the Fourth Street side, and there's an exit there that's near a separate door that I know leads to the Law Library. And at the time I was exiting, there was a nice-looking young lady coming out that door. I say young lady, she was in her mid-30s, she might be flattered to hear herself described as mid-30s. And since I only know the Law Library from my own experience, I asked her, "Are you coming from the Law Library?" And she said, "No, I'm just checking my box." Now, she didn't say what box, I don't know if the county rents boxes, but I conjecture that county probably has a system for city and county employees to distribute and receive documents through box system. And then she was trying to be kind and helpful, and she said, "I don't think it's still there." Now, this raises a tantalizing possibility. She go every day to check her box, and she's never seen it open. I don't know that for a fact, but if this were one of those cop shows on television, it would be enough evidence for an investigation. I've been attempting to call the attention of the Humboldt County Administration to the failure to provide access to the Law Library, which is required under the law. During that time, I've been to three Board of Trustees of the Law Library meetings, and I've been to 12 of your meetings. And then, during that time, no one has said, "Well, that's wrong. You have a right to use the Law Library." Now, you're probably thinking to yourself, "Wait, wait a minute. Is that right? Rex Bone said to me, he knows somebody who used the Law Library, and therefore, it must be my own stupid fault." Not quite the same thing, but maybe that's what he intended. Who knows what people intend? I also got a note from Steve Madron, asking what's going on. He didn't say, "I'm not trying to make fun of you, I really want to know," and I answered it straightforwardly and didn't get any other response. The point is that there's nothing more fundamental than being able to educate yourself about your civil rights, because that's the most fundamental of civil rights.
Thank you.
I wanted to take these few minutes to bring your attention to something that's very pressing for me and my community of Willow Creek, and the community of the Calamath Trinity River. The next two days, the 24th, 25th, and 26th, the State Water Resource Control Board is going to be having conversation, a hearing about voluntary agreements surrounding the Delta Bay, Bay Delta water convergence, and the impacts on the Trinity River and Shasta dams. I'm concerned for the, what seems to be lack of attention that I've heard coming from Humboldt County in concert with Trinity County, also working with Hoopa Valley Tribe and Urok Tribe around advocating for the rights of the Trinity River, the communities on the Trinity River, and the ultimate inhabitants of the Trinity and Calamath River, which are the Coho and Spring Chinook salmon. Two of these species are listed state and federally as endangered, and there are encroaching diversions that are being suggested above the 600,000 acre feet that are delivered from the Trinity River that further threaten the safety of the fish in those rivers. There's public comment on the 25th and 26th, and I would hope that there's some representation on our Board of Supervisors advocating for the needs of our fish, our tribes, and the communities. There's a supposition that we need to have increased winter flows and decreased summer flows. We have a multimillion-dollar whitewater rafting industry in our very rural counties, parts of Western Humboldt and, or Western Trinity and Eastern Humboldt County. These sources of economy and recreation would be devastated, wiped out, if we dropped below the 450 CFS. And really advocate for greater attention to this really pressing resource. The Trinity River needs to be protected, the Trinity River needs our advocacy, and it's so amazing that the governor is, you know, advocating for these dam removals, but without cold water reserves held in Trinity Lake that can be dispersed to the lower Calamath, we will see further fish kills like we did in 2001, and I urge you to be present and make comment in the next three days.
Great, thank you very much. Nikki, do you have anybody?
Yes, I do, Chair Bone. We have three callers in the queue, 7718, star six to unmute, and you'll have three minutes.
Ken Swatki, I strongly support you listening to that prior speaker. We have, I believe, you're the caretaker of 50,000 acre feet of that water that should be controlled, and you should have, which ends in 30 people, off to some wind symposium, and Mark is benjured. Can we plant even three people to this more critical thing that's way more important to act locally here, as far as everybody's life and the pigeons and everything of nature? So, a little bit bothersome to see it weighed that way. I wanted to talk a little bit more about offshore wind. Many years ago, probably 12, I talked to Homeland Security, asking if they were gonna have a strategic port here, and they said, "Ken, let me show you this. I can't answer your question, but the shortest distance between here, and now we're supposed to say Asia." So, have you ever heard of a bait and switch? A bait and switch would be, it would not be popular for the government to come in and say, "We're gonna put a strategic port in here, we're gonna put in a really large dock facility, we're gonna put in all these other things, we're gonna, we're gonna improve the airports, so we can fly troops in here." That probably wouldn't be popular, but if we're gonna go ahead and say, "Oh, we're gonna do a big offshore wind project," maybe you should start questioning what's actually gonna happen here. Do a little research into this. I recommend that you pay attention to this. And then, of course, if we're gonna have a strategic port, we gotta have an iron dome, we're gonna be a target, we're probably gonna have two railroads coming in here, that would be consistent with what they would need as far as moving, what they need to move in and out of our port. But that'd be, pay a little attention to, and something to spend a little more time on, spend a little more time there locally, please, you know, on projects like the dam. We need Whiskey Town gone completely, we don't need that water pumped out, it'll keep the trolley like the Carter's focus out for cold water during the summer. Get rid of Whiskey Town. Thank you for my opportunity to speak today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller is 8895, star six to unmute, and you will have three minutes. Okay, Chair Bone, nope, they're unmuted. Thank you. Can you hear us, 8895? Okay, we're gonna go to the next caller, we'll try you in just a minute. 0151, star six to unmute, and you'll have three minutes. 0151, star six to unmute, and you'll have three minutes.
Hello, Dottie Russell again. I wanted to talk about the working group that was held just a few days ago about the tiny house villages, or what exactly you wanted to call that. I'm not really sure, but one thing that seems pretty noticeable to me is that there are lots and lots and lots of people that can't pay their rent and can't pay their electricity. And there weren't very many people like that that were talking about some suggestions, what it might look like, what they might be able to do, how they might be able to participate. So, I know that there was some mention of having some more work groups, and I'd like to specifically have a work group either in, well, down in Southern Humboldt someplace, possibly even in New Phillipsville and Redway, or Phillipsville, Redway, and Garberville. But I think that it's really a lost opportunity if we're not asking the people that need this help the most. So, let's figure out how we can interface together and find some of the people that would like to talk about that. It's very nice to have some grant money coming down. We appreciate it down in Southern Humboldt. The problem is that if it just is spent, if a lot of it is spent on people when they're actually going to court to get a judgment against them for not paying, it would be much more sensible, much wiser, and a lot healthier if they had to move, if it would be addressed, where they could move to right away. As you know, there was no shelter down here this year or last year. The Episcopal people, the Baptist people, and the Christian Zionists did all step in and do a lot. And when you were doing the strategic planning, you said you'd do better. You said you'd try harder. I know you are trying harder, but I'm sorry to say it's not hard enough. We can't have people going to Eureka to die. We can't have people down here dying, and we can't have people freezing, you know, in the pouring down rain. So, I'd like to call back, and I'd like somebody to tell me what the doing better is that's happening and plan for the future. And you know how to reach me. My name's Dottie Russell. Thank you.
Thank you. Did we get?
8895, star six to unmute. You're unmuted, but we can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
Now we can hear you, yes.
Okay. Hi. My name is Mark Schaffner, and the reason I'm calling was about the revelation last week from Hansel about doing preemptive spying on the populace with the cameras. I just see that as a total violation of our policy. I'm surprised that the people that are civil rights advocates didn't speak out about this. I'm surprised that those individuals that support individual rights haven't spoken out about this. I wonder why we're doing preemptive collection of data on individuals without any probable cause. We haven't been told the details about this software data, where this information is kept, on cloud, who stores that. Is it public information? So, if it's public information with our tax dollars, and it's not involved in a criminal investigation, then it should be public record. So, I just think it's very highly secretive that this wasn't disclosed to the public. And for once, I agree with Billy on this in that he said it's all about trust, and I agree. It is all about trust, and I don't trust the government. I don't trust Humboldt County based on their past performance, and I certainly don't trust Billy Hansel in the use of data. So, for the record, it seems a lot like the Python program that was implemented by the NSA. And for one, I'm just not going to just take this. I think we have to stand up citizens for our rights. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Bone. There are no more callers in the queue.
And no one else in the public? Bring it back, and I think we're going to go to Mr. Ford. Director Ford, how are you today?
I'm good. Thank you, Chair Bone.
That was a mic test. That was a mic test.
Did I pass?
I'll open this public hearing.
My name's John Ford. Good morning to the Board of Supervisors. I'm here to present the Commercial Cannabis Permitting and Acreage and Watershed Distribution Report. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. So, I'm going to go over a few things as I give this report this morning. One of the first things I'll do is spend a little bit of time talking about what Resolution 1843 did. That's the resolution that was adopted establishing a cap for the total number of cannabis permits within Humboldt County. It also identified the impacted and refuge watersheds, and then also called for an annual There is, I'm also going to go into the enforcement of unpermitted cannabis farms, give you a slight summary of the findings of this, and then address some of the public comments that have been made. So, Resolution 1843 was adopted at the time the commercial cannabis land use ordinance was adopted. It was adopted to establish a cap. At the time, there was concern that we would see a repeat of 1.0 where over 2,000 applications were submitted in 2016, and wanting to make sure that there was an understanding that this wasn't just going to continue to expand at that rate, and then also look at the distribution. So, the resolution identified that there would be a cap, and then the cap was broken down by watershed. It also identified refuge in the impacted watersheds. An impacted watershed is a watershed that was impacted due to sedimentation or other impacts that was affecting the fisheries in those areas, and a refuge watershed was a watershed that was viewed as being central to maintaining fisheries and that it was still a high-functioning watershed. And so, those were established, and no new permits, no permits for new cultivation could be issued within those watersheds. The resolution also called for an annual report discussing the distribution of permitting and the acreage allowances, the status of the applications that have been submitted, code enforcement actions. It was required to be at a public hearing and required consultation with law enforcement and other local and state agencies. One of the things I want to talk about a little bit, and this is kind of setting the tone for a lot of what will be shared here in this report today, but also addresses some of the public comments, is the relationship between the California Environment Quality Act, the EIR, that was done for the CCLUO, and Resolution 1843. First of all, it's important to understand that Resolution 1843 was not a requirement of the EIR. It was something that was done completely separate from that. But then, when we're talking about SEQA, there's a really important concept to understand, and that's the concept of baseline. And in SEQA terminology, what baseline means is simply what existed at the time the analysis began. When we began this analysis, there were something like 15,000 cultivation sites within the county. That, based upon estimates that were done by UC Berkeley, was on 5,000 to 6,000 parcels. So, all of the pre-existing cultivation that existed was part of baseline. That's something that existed at the time. So, what the Environmental Quality Act requires the county to do is evaluate the impacts of going above that, of approving new cultivation. The EIR assumed that there would be, or anticipated that there would be 1,000 new cultivation sites. To date, we have received 378 applications under 2.0. I have not been yet been able to break that number down to determine how many of those were pre-existing, how many of those were for permits that were associated with RRRs where they had not submitted an application previously but had already submitted a donor, what we call a donor site, the site that's being closed under 1.0, and then there's applications for new, and then applications for expansion, which would also be considered new. But obviously, we're not anywhere close to 1,000 new cultivation applications, or 1,000 applications for new cultivation. So, this is the table that comes right out of Resolution 1843, identifying the cap at 3,500 with 1,205 acres allowed. Just one of the things I want to show within this is you will notice that the distribution of permits and acres are not just uniformly dispersed across all watersheds. That was because some watersheds are bigger than others, and some watersheds have more land that's available for cultivation, i.e., it's not timberland, it's not national forest, it's not park. It is zoned correctly. So, that all affects those numbers that are reflected there in that table. The next table that I'm going to show you shows the permitting status. These are approved permits. In the left-hand column, which is here, and my pointing arrow kind of points to the yellow column there, that shows the total number of applications that have been submitted. And so, that's, and these are just applications, the number down at the bottom, 2,125, are applications for cultivation. The number below that, 3,009, include all other applications, processing, distribution, manufacturing, retail. And so, the 2,125 are the applications that are really subject to the cap. That's for 875 acres. The total cultivation permits that have been approved to date is 1,068, and the total, that's for cultivation permits, the total number of permits that have been approved Sorry, I need to move the Zoom link. So, you'll see then the blue column that there are 400 applications that are still pending, a total of 535. That includes non-cultivation applications. And then there are 657 permits that have either been denied or withdrawn. The next table is the permits in relationship to the cap. Yes?
Can you go back one? Just point of clarification, maybe I'm slow. You've got withdrawn at 265, and then you have withdrawn, denied cultivation permits at 657. Is that 265 in with that 657, or is that voluntary withdrawn?
It's acres and permits. I'm sorry. See, that's why I asked. Now I know. Yep. Thank you. So, then here is the number of permits that have been issued in relationship to the cap. And you will see that in terms of the permitting, there is no watershed right now that, from a permit standpoint, has exceeded 50% of the cap. With respect to the permitted cultivation acres, only the Lower Trinity River is above 50%. The overall average is 31% for the number of permits and 32% for the number of acres that are allowed. This table has added the number of permits and pending applications together. You will notice there that there are 1,468 total pending permits, or pending applications, and approved permits for cultivation, and 1,871 pending applications and permits for cannabis cultivation and non-cultivation permits. This does increase the percentages somewhat, and then it also increases the percentages of the amount of cultivation that's being requested. But still, it's approximately half of the cap. Going to move now into how code enforcement has affected this. Code enforcement has enforced against 1,211 parcels that were cultivating without permits. 99 of those are in compliance agreements. 887 of those have been completely abated. And then the far right shows the number of fully abated parcels in a compliance agreement and parcels where the permit has been withdrawn or denied. And so, that is, that results in 1,643 parcels that are no longer cultivating. In the narrative, we identified that that 657 includes new and pre-existing. We assumed that 65% of the withdrawn, denied would actually be for pre-existing. That's a very conservative estimate. As we've continued to research that, the number is closer to 80%. So, we said that realistically, 1,400, I think it was 13, parcels are no longer cultivating that were cultivating in 2016. So, we've also identified the subwatersheds that were either the impacted or the refuge watersheds. Those are listed here. This is just more for information. You can see that in these watersheds, there's 141 applications remaining. 341 have been approved. 162 have been withdrawn or denied. And then this is a similar table showing just for the subwatersheds, the impacted and refuge watersheds, the enforcement activity that has occurred within those, just to see that, again, there's no, there has been a reduction in the number of operations that were within these watersheds. So, one of the things that wasn't envisioned at the time that Resolution 1843 was adopted was something that we've been struggling with recently, which is the impact of unpaid taxes and unpaid costs associated with processing permits. There's currently a total of 538 permits and applicants who have either not entered into agreements to pay their Measure S taxes or have not come current on their costs associated with processing their permit. 228 of those owe both Measure S and processing costs. 76, those are permit holders. 76 applicants owe either Measure S or processing costs. And 243 permit holders owe Measure S or processing costs. That totals 538. The reason that is important to note is that the permit holders are due to be suspended. The first set of letters went out last week on these. If they don't enter into an agreement and/or pay their processing costs, that could ultimately result in revocation of the permit. For applicants that owe either Measure S or processing costs, they are currently being scheduled for a zoning administrator hearing to be denied. A lot of comments have been made about water use, and I just wanted to bring up a couple of points that have been raised and have been bandied about, but were also not really part of Resolution 1843. part of Resolution 1843 but have been, have come to light since then. In 2001, there was a Cal Berkeley study that estimated that in Humboldt County, the amount of water use is .0002% of the annual water use for crop irrigation with the county, within the county. And then there was a study done by the USGS and showing that approximately 30%, 34% of precipitation in Northern California percolates into groundwater. This results in 378, 500, 1,000 gallons of groundwater recharged per year, per acre of land on average. So in terms of the findings of what we're presenting today is that there are conservatively 1,413 less properties being cultivated now than in 2016. That number is likely to rise. First of all, the 400 applications that are still in process, not all of those are likely to be approved. And secondly, the permit holders and applicants that owe taxes and/or costs are likely, many of those are likely to either lose their permits and/or not be approved. We hope that's not the case, but that is the apparent trend. Just also wanted to point out that we're not close to any of the caps in any of the Some public comments I wanted to respond to because some of them just are misleading. And one is the comment that routine monitoring of streams and rivers was stipulated in the FEIR, then that has never taken place. It's true that routine monitoring of streams and rivers has not taken place, but that was not stipulated for, that was not a requirement of the FEIR. And then it says that the FEIR acknowledges that these areas are inadequately mitigated resulting in the passage of the FEIR with overriding concerns. So I want to point out that CEQA allows where there are impacts that can't be mitigated to a less insignificant level, that the document allows a local jurisdiction to make findings of overriding consideration, i.e. that there are reasons to approve a project or approve a program in spite of the environmental effects due to the overall value of having the project or program proceed. There were two findings in the FEIR that determined that there were significant unavoidable impacts. One of those was related to air quality, specifically and only related to PM10. And that is really related to dust. And that is because Humboldt County is a non, is in non-attainment for PM10. So one granule of dust into the air is a significant adverse impact, there's no way to mitigate that. So took a conservative approach, identified that as a significant adverse impact, couldn't be mitigated. And the second was related to odor. There were no other significant and unavoidable impacts identified within the FEIR. And I assume by overriding concerns, they're talking about findings of overriding consideration. And those findings were made based upon PM10 and based upon odor. The other one was that the county had agreed to participate in a watershed analysis and they cited the response that the county made in the FEIR to the North Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board, saying that the county would be happy to participate. And that is true. The thing that the letter did not do was quote the very next sentence, and I've got the next sentence up there. It says, "The DEIR does provide a watershed-level impact analysis associated with the proposed ordinance that includes details on current water quality and surface water flow conditions. Water quality impacts would be mitigated through compliance with the state water board policy as well as implementation of mitigation measure 3.8-2." And then it says that cumulative impacts were not addressed, and that's not true. The FEIR is required to look at cumulative impact, those were evaluated within the EIR. One of the other comments that occurred frequently was social harm or social impacts. And there's a lot of case law identifying that social impacts are not environmental impacts. And so there, there's a different level of concern there, but those are not related to environmental impacts. And then there's a number of requests for additional study. And additional study is warranted where the program or project is either approaching thresholds and we're not sure about whether or not the impacts have been mitigated or where there are unanticipated impacts or unanticipated consequences. And I think the point that is being raised here is that what we're seeing is an overall decline in the number of properties that are being cultivated. And leave it to the board's discretion to struggle with whether or not that would warrant additional studies, but normally where there is a high rate of growth or a high rate of concern that there may be additional growth, that would be where perhaps additional studies would be warranted, particularly if a cap were to be increased. But that's, that's not the discussion here. The discussion really is, is that we're seeing an overall decline in the number of cannabis farms that are both legal and not permitted. And then finally, let me apologize for not having brought the report, the annual report that was agreed to in Resolution 1843 before. I think from staff's perspective, certainly from mine, we focused more on the ordinance, which required a report and studies at the time the cap were to be increased. And we lost track of the fact that an annual report was required. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I think the annual report would have been more critical if it was skyrocketing up and skyrocketing past the thresholds, but with the decline, I think. Supervisor Bushnell?
Well, I would love to hear public comment.
Understood. Do you have anything to say?
Not yet.
Okay. All right. Open up to public comment. You're so part of the public, Dylan. Yeah, you are too.
Good morning. Thomas Mulder here. It's unfortunate all five of you aren't here. Seems like every time I happen to work my medical appointments and public comment in, not all five of you are here. Perceived bias, you know? People would say perceived bias because I'm a cannabis cultivator, I'm also a community member. Perceived bias would also be considered, you know, a supervisor that says, hey, all those cultivation operations, they shouldn't be in the hill, they belong in the valleys, we don't want to see anyone out in those hills. Hopefully whoever said that hears that. I appreciate the resolution, or the report from staff, I think it was a good job. What I heard there, I just, I only graduated high school, I didn't go to college, but those numbers look pretty similar as far as approved permits and permits, or cultivation sites that have been withdrawn or the county has cleaned up. So seems like a wash, I don't know. I've heard rumors that some people want to dive farther and they want more regulations, more regulations. And I've heard people say they want looser regulations. I think everyone's here, they want to think about the future generations. You know, there's a group of individuals that perceive bias and said everyone out in the hills are horrible people. And it's really unfortunate. Some of those people in this room never once asked to shake my hand and say, hey, this is my name, this is what I'm about. So hopefully, whatever happens moving forward, we think about the next generation, we think about how we can have sustainability within this county, and we don't try to crush out every last opportunity for economic viability within this county. Whatever your belief is, be upfront about it. And the one biggest thing I ask is if your intention is to get everyone out of the hills, that you say straight up, hey, this is our intention, we don't want anyone living in the hills, we don't want anyone out there, we want everyone in the metropolitan areas, and that's the way it is. Just be upfront about it instead of sidestepping. Because it's really unfortunate when stories come back to me of hearing supervisors say stories like that. And I hope that I can get a recording of that, because I would consider that perceived bias, that that person shouldn't partake in it. So that one touched the nerve to me. I'm two of those approved, I will say I'm two of those approved applications up there and also one of them pending. I'm also luckily in the payment plan, so I'm going to step out of here and go make my payment while I'm up here in the courthouse, get my son back to school, and go about my day. I wish everyone the best, and the biggest thing I'd wish is not to judge others. If you think something about someone, try to walk up to them and at least introduce yourself before you make a perceived opinion. Thank you.
Morning. My name's Mark Thurmond. I'd like to talk a little bit about what Director Ford was mentioning. I think it's regrettable that the county has not followed the FEIR or Resolution 1843 in providing these promised analyses of environmental, social impacts for cannabis cultivation. I disagree with his interpretation of the FEIR. Until the county and the state partners can adequately provide analysis and monitoring that generate critical data to inform future decisions and to ensure there is no harm to watersheds and residents, I strongly recommend the county should drop future permits and permit applications. Six years ago, the FEIR concluded dire consequences that cannabis cultivation would have impacts that were considerable, cumulative, and unavoidable, some of which Mr. Ford just mentioned, and declared that multiple agency analyses of watersheds and subwatersheds, the tributaries, would be necessary to resolve these problems. The county said it was willing to participate in these analyses, but as Mr. Ford acknowledged, no analyses have been undertaken. FEIR also called for routine water monitoring, it did, it's in there, to mitigate impacts to be conducted by state agencies, these to be invited by the county as a lead agency. No such water monitoring has been done and no testing of the water has been done. We still don't know what's in the water from any cause. Six years ago, the Planning Department's Resolution 1843 arbitrarily assigned capital allocations to watersheds. Now, the size of a watershed is not a criterion, you've got to look at the environment, the water source, that aquifers, the whole picture. There was no care and capacity study done. Annual hearings and analyses were promised in 1843 to inform rational decisions, but no such hearings have ever taken place. President's staff report is not in any sense an analysis of social or environmental impacts that were called for in 1843, and the report offers no insight or utility in understanding impacts of cannabis or potential care and capacities. But its comments on caps do raise the question that perhaps the caps could drop down to the current number of permits. So to reiterate, in order, we repeat strongly and urge the county to make these formal, timely requests to appropriate agencies for necessary watershed and subwatershed, environmental, social impact studies, and for necessary soil and water testing, shouldn't cost anything to ask, and that until then, we stop any additional permits. Thank you.
Good morning, Board. Good morning, Director Ford. I'm Andy Riggs, a local cannabis farmer, dad, and community member. I was hoping for a bit of a respite after the resounding defeat of Measure A, where our community voted 76% to 24% in a rebuke of the measure. However, this letter, which was submitted to you all, has compelled me to leave the farm where I should be working and speak here with you all today. Hardly six weeks after March 5th, and here we are, addressing this letter and its demands of our community and our county. This letter is demanding the county take action to analyze negative impacts of legal cannabis cultivation, which as stated earlier, the county is not required to do. I also would like to highlight points made during the run-up to the March 5th election. So pre-legalization, the CDFW had mapped out nearly 15,000 independent grows, all unregulated, all non-compliant. I ask again, where were these folks demanding qualitative data during the great green rush? Where were they when those grows were littered throughout the hillsides? The fact is, is that regulation and compliance has cleaned up cannabis and has drastically reduced all impacts negative on the environment, on noise, and light pollution, and the social negative impacts. It's gone, we all see it. It has wiped away more than 10,000 grow sites. Now there's hardly 1,000 of us left operating, and we're all compliant, we're all regulated, we all follow the laws. I sometimes wonder if there is a greater agenda at play, which we are not aware of, one that would see us gone and see a corporate consolidation of cannabis outside the Emerald Triangle where it belongs, this is with the famed heartland of cannabis. As for us at our left, we all practice forbearance, we all use waters stored during the winter for irrigation from rain, we cover our greenhouses to mitigate light pollution, we participate in our communities, and we love where we live. All of these are positive changes and impacts to our community and our county. Positivity and unity is what moves us forward as a whole. Together, we can progress to a brighter future for the good of all. The positive is that we are still here and we are an accepted part of our community. We are land stewards and we are proud to be who we are doing what we do. I can't begin to tell you all how much the support of our community through the Measure A campaign meant to us. I hope that support and momentum can still add fuel to the future of this county to continue to unite individuals from diverse backgrounds in our community.
Good morning, Supervisors and Staff. Russ Gordon, on behalf of Humboldt County Growers Alliance, really appreciate the presentation from Director Ford, which I thought was very clarifying and really sort of painted a picture about the overall situation we're in, that we've seen a great deal of attrition in terms of the amount of cultivation in the county, the amount of cultivation-related impact in the county, and that I think by all accounts, unfortunately, that trend is going to continue. I think one thing we struggled with throughout the Measure A campaign is really trying to get clarity on precisely what the problem is that is perceived in relation to cannabis, because it's very difficult to talk about solutions if, there can't be a clear statement about what the problem is. I have looked at some of the public comments that were submitted and some of the conversation around this. I hear that the problem is that there's a green rush. I think it's really clear that we're not in a green rush, we're in a green exodus. I think that the data that Director Ford provided makes that very clear. I've heard it said that the problem is that the county is not conducting required analysis. My reading of Resolution 18-43, and maybe staff or anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's pretty clear, Resolution 18-43 does not require the county to conduct an annual watershed analysis. It requires the county to conduct that analysis if permits are proposed to increase. In addition, this analysis, as far as I can tell, has occurred, both in the EIR, as Director Ford mentioned, but also the Berkeley study, which Director Ford mentioned, there's actually several different Berkeley studies, it's been intensively studied by Berkeley, the impact of legal cannabis cultivation on the watersheds. And essentially, the result of that, which was distributed in a two-page summary published to Kim Kemp two months ago, is that the impact of licensed cannabis cultivation on the watersheds is marginal in every case, and much more significant impacts are associated with residential uses and with other agriculture. We've heard that the problem is that there's been no discussion or assessment of cumulative impact. Again, I think that was very clearly addressed in Director Ford's presentation. I think we are looking at cumulative impact, and there's no question, that cumulative impact has dramatically decreased. So even going through the entire Measure A conversation, being here today, listening to the public comment, reading the public comments, still not clear to me what the perceived problem is. And if that's not clear, I don't know what the request for action is. I do want to, you know, just ask in general that if we're talking about assessing environmental impact associated with cannabis, that we also assess all environmental impacts of all activities within the county, whether that's land use activities, residential activities, industrial, commercial, agricultural, whether that's other things which are affecting our county's environment in a more macro way. It has been frustrating at times to be here and have really continued conversations only about licensed cannabis cultivation when we know that there are a variety of things affecting our environment and all of those things need to be considered collectively. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again, Supervisors. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Staff. I'm Dylan Matoll from Honeydew. I run a small, outdoor-only regenerative cannabis farm, as well as being president of the Lost Coast Farmers Guild, which is advocating and working actively on appellations in our county and in our watershed. I also sit on the, on HCGA Board. Today, I'm here to continue to advocate for the normalization of cannabis agriculture and against the scapegoating of cannabis as the root of all problems in our environment and county. As we heard here today, the real issue is happening out there, like the drawdown on the Trinity River, big issues in our economy with projects that need to be discussed. The count, we all have a lot of work to do, and we need to stop focusing just on cannabis. I specifically would like today to address this letter presented by the Ad hoc Adaptive Management Group, previously familiar to us all as the Group of Proponents of Measure A. From now on, I will be referring to them as the Wham! Group, as sadly, they are still looking to hammer down and put a big wham! hit on legal cannabis cultivation through the same old talking points. If they have such great concern about the greater environment, why don't they look at activities, as Ross just said, throughout the entire watersheds? Cumulative impacts are not just coming from cannabis. We all live in these watersheds. The voters of Humboldt County, with a resounding defeat of 76%, voted no against these exact same talking points. I would like to say, as we heard, and I think that I'd love to hear more engagement from our agencies, but just because someone hasn't taken the time and done their own research into the data that does exist, doesn't mean that it's not there. And we hear this repeatedly from the Measure A folks, that this, there is no monitoring, that there is no analysis, that there is no studies. That's actually not true. The academics of Berkeley have done a study and looked at 91 watersheds comprehensively, and have determined that cannabis is using a very small fraction of the water, specifically compared to residential use, non-licensed cannabis, and just regular agriculture. We need road work in this county, we don't need road traffic studies, we need to, we need, we don't need more reports, what we need is more support of our local businesses and our local industry. Go to Garberville, look at what's happening, look at the charts, look at the numbers of where we were with cultivation, where we were with permits, those applied permits where people who were already cultivating, they're not there anymore, it's been cut in half. Yet here we are, talking again about this green rush, which frankly, doesn't exist, it's exhausting, we all need to get to work on our farms. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Polly Kinsinger, and my farm is in rural eastern Humboldt, outstate Route 36. It's called Mama Bear Farms. That's me. On Burr Valley Road, we historically had around 60 active cultivation parcels prior to 2016, under the medicinal cannabis era, with no oversight or regulation. All the nightmare stories you hear about the cultivators were doing the environment, were doing to the environment probably happened out there during this time. Weekly visits from the sheriff were a regular occurrence. When permitting began, there were about 35 parcels that started out the permitting process, and there were many others who didn't bother. As the process progressed, all of those farms that did not pursue licensure were abated, all of them. We currently have fewer than 12 active farms left actually cultivating, out of 60 parcels that were cultivating previously to legalization, 12. The farms that remain must abide by the regulations that require enough water storage to cultivate without drawing on their water source beginning April 1st, and they are required to have meters to justify their usage and report the usage to three different state agencies. Let's stop talking about the big, bad cannabis industry degrading our natural resources, and look towards the fact that active logging and hauling went on all winter on over four miles of our rural dirt road. The damage done and the discharge that occurred this winter was like nothing I've seen since moving to the mountain, even at the peak of the green rush. Most of us that are left cultivating cannabis in Humboldt County are stewards of the environment, as my family has been for 111 years on our parcel. We live in these rural locations because we love the sustainable lives that we can live there, and we love caring for these wild, remote places. Help us hold on to what we have left, so we can continue to look out for our rural lands. Thank you.
I want to address a public comment the Board received for this hearing. If this so-called watershed adaptive management ad hoc is actually interested in improving watershed resilience, it needs to recognize that legal cannabis cultivation is a small part to the bigger picture of the watershed impacts. Humboldt County has 27 community water districts that serve residential, commercial, and industrial customers. Every one of these CSDs pulls water from a surface diversion 12 months of the year. With each of these previously mentioned, and within each of these previously mentioned watersheds, in my small town of 1,500 in Willow Creek, our community service water district has used up to 44 million gallons a month to service customers. This service diversion pulls from a major tributary of the Trinity River, the Willow Creek. There's no forbearance period required to mitigate the impacts to our watershed in those dry months, and very little criticism or input from community members or local environmental groups. I feel it's very disingenuous for a small group of Measure A proponents to demand such restrictions on small cannabis cultivation businesses and make zero attempt to actually address the true impacts of these watersheds. Measure A was shot down with 76% of Humboldt County voters. Its policy fell short of meeting the mark, and the people have spoken clearly that they do not support these restrictive measures. In reality, the small group of community members now identifying as the watershed adaptive management group is uninformed and unwilling to recognize that this research they request is already available. This group's attempt is a direct attack against legal farmers and small business. Once again, they fall short addressing watershed carrying capacity and cumulative impacts. This group needs to do better. My request to the Board is that you stand up for what remains of this cannabis community here in Humboldt County, and the small businesses that support it. Further restrictions within this industry will have dire consequences on our rural communities and larger economies. I appreciate your attention to this matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Bauer?
Good morning. Be happy to know I didn't prepare a speech, but I have a couple things that I'd like to talk about, I should identify myself. Scott Bauer, Department of Fish and Wildlife. As far as the caps go, you know, we worked extensively with the Planning Department to develop these caps, right, and to, when we were really concerned about a continual green rush, right? So, now, given the state of affairs with cannabis, and kind of what we're seeing with the market across California, I think we need to think about monitoring, which is a component, a component of the ordinance, because the caps were put in place, and we agreed to them thinking, yeah, those watersheds can handle that, right? They can handle up to that, as far as water use goes, and the other issues around cannabis cultivation. But currently, it doesn't seem to be the big issue, you know? The issue really is, I think, monitoring, and we, and I'll be the first to admit, I think the agencies, the county, we haven't done enough of that. And when I mean monitoring, I mean looking at local impacts, localized impacts, let's say Larrabee Valley, which is filled with wells, right? We're concerned about Summer Steelhead downstream, there's only about 100 of those left in the Van Duzen River. How are those wells drawing on that cold groundwater that might express itself as a spring, or, you know, downstream, and provide that cold water for Steelhead? So we have these kind of local concerns, and we should be monitoring those, we should try and figure out those issues, and we're happy to work with the county to work on monitoring plans, like where do we think we still need to be looking at issues like water use? I will say that the Department of Fish and Wildlife has done, is doing a lot of compliance reviews. So we're looking at all of our permits that we've issued in Humboldt County, which is roughly, I don't know, 2,000, or something like that for cannabis? And as of January 2023, we've done 571 compliance reviews, about 65% have at least one deficiency. So, in that permitting process, we're seeing deficiencies, and some of those could be like they didn't report on their water use, or something kind of minor, but we do have a lot of those that haven't done their work, their road work, you know, their water system upgrades. So, 65% is kind of a big number that we should be thinking about, as far as, you know, compliance goes on these sites. And lastly, 19 seconds, as far as enforcement goes, you know, we're working with our partners, Humboldt County Sheriff's Office and others, Department of Cannabis Control, and indoor's back in a big way. We're talking illicit cultivation. Diesel dope is back, and so is power theft to cultivate. Just something to think about. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good morning again. This is Hannah White out of Willow Creek, Emerald Queen Farms. I'm a cultivator with my husband, and everything that I wanted to say has already been said, so I just want to double down on the Berkeley watershed says .0002%, right? That's nothing. We are not in impact. Also, groundwater recharging, 385,000 gallons per acre on my 77-acre ranch adequately recharges our stored well water. We store our well water over the winter, right? Like, we're even forbearing on our well, and that's voluntary, it's not part of our compliance agreement. We need to focus on bigger problems. We have 20% of the adults in Humboldt County have a 5th grade reading level, 30% of our children face food insecurities, and Trinity River is in threat. Our salmon, our, it's a giant, healthy water resource, like, needs our help. Cultivators are not the issue. We are exporting so much water, and we are not advocating for the needs of our cold water reserves, which are essential for not only the Trinity, but lower Kalamath salmon species. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, Sunshine Searseada. Well, I think we've gone from the green rush already, and I'm afraid as of today, I'm seeing the green wash of the industry. This is not what I want to be seeing and what I want to be experiencing. We do need to monitor. This is not about how negative are we, this isn't about someone's worse than me, someone in an industry is doing worse than me, so I'm okay. This is about evaluating the positive, the positivity that we're bringing to the environment. This is what the monitoring is about, it's a self-evaluation. It's nothing personal, it's nothing about better this, it's nothing about status, it's not about that. This is just about humbling ourselves and saying, hey, where are we in this? What's happening here? And so, getting an idea of where we are, this is a good time to be doing this kind of research now, before federal legalization. The more we know, the better. We may be able to expand and scale our grows in our watersheds. There's nothing in the ordinance, there's nothing in there about water conservation, it's just fill up a plastic water tank. If we had water conservation, we might be able to expand and allow for more parcels to grow on, but if we find out that we're like, oh, this watershed's already got, you know, there's only too much water being drawn out, then, you know, but these are the things to be thinking about, is let's not be thinking negatively, let's be thinking positively about the actions that we take, and let's evaluate this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Here we are again. I feel like this is Groundhog Day or something.
There's a song about that.
Yeah. I just want to make a couple points to finish up. Appreciate Scott Bauer coming out today. He threw out a number of 65%, still have some work to do. I don't know if that's taking into consideration people that have failed completely, have pulled out, withdrawn, and are not part of the program, you know? I think our tax numbers show that as well. So it's hard to pull anything from a dry well, so to speak, especially when we're talking about water, or to even get any repairs done in that world. And a lot of those culverts, and those, the roadwork we did, was for previous legacy issues, and Prop 64 has a bucket that we all pay into through retail, all of us that are in the active, legal, taxpaying realm, right? There's a direct fund that goes to cleaning up, mitigating environmental degradation and impacts from our industry and ones before. So there's money available to do any of this, including this monitoring. And I don't know if this is the same monitoring that is already happening, or if there needs to be other monitoring, but I see a guy by the old Silvendales building going out on a cable dipping the river at different times of flow, like, they're monitoring there. I'm monitoring my home water use, my ag water use, I'm monitoring the use of my rain catchment coming out of my pond, going into a tank, coming out of a tank, back onto my plants. I wonder if the proponents have a POD registered for their diversion in the hills? Or was that because that happened before this time? I think we really need to look across the board, who's partaking in this monitoring, and that we're all treated equally. Moving forward, you know, I can appreciate a little bit of what Sunshine was talking about, but I don't, right? We're not thinking about gearing up, we're not thinking about future expansion at this moment in time. We're just trying to hold the baseline, and to quit showing up to defend ourselves again and again and again, when we're being singled out. It needs to be across the board if you're going to have any of these types of requirements. Remove the cannabis from the document, and just make it a countywide document. If you're talking culverts, talk culvert from the bay up into the mountain, every county road, but don't talk about mine, because mine are done. Thank you.
Thank you. So, anyone else? Nick, do we have?
Yes, Chair Ben, we have four callers in the queue. First caller, 0151, star six to unmute, and you'll have three minutes.
Sorry, Russell, again. I'm surprised that nobody has addressed the issue of one homeless individual and the impact that one person has, because nobody's paying any attention to where that homeless individual needs to live, or his family. I think that's shocking. Now, in addition to that, we, there was, there was all this voting, all this big deal about vote yes, legalize marijuana, it's going to be great, the small farmers are going to be so happy, have the bank accounts that are supposed to work, whatever, none of that happened. So, is there any, is there any payback? Is there anything that we do back for all the people that voted believing that the small farmers would be okay, that they would be able to have a few plants? I don't know how many plants. I don't grow cannabis, not to say I wasn't abated for growing cannabis, that was a mistake, including the Water Board coming to ask me, so we could go into that, but we won't. So, how many plants can somebody grow? How many tomato plants can you grow? How many those pepper plants can you grow? I don't grow things, because I'm not very good at it, but there are a lot of people that are good at it, so why don't we maximize the use of people growing food, growing cannabis, doing what they need to do, that they're good at? I just don't understand why we all voted to approve this, yes, the small farmers are going to be good, and now they're not good, and now they're homeless, and now they can't even, you know, pay their rent and electricity. What's going on, and how are you going to fix it, and how fast can you fix it? Because ending homelessness in 2005 didn't work, and now it's 20 years later. I'm tired of it, and I'm tired of paying for trying to keep people for over a year without paying rent, because nobody's doing anything about it. So I'm demanding that somebody do something about it, and somebody calls me, and somebody tells me, who can plant a few plants for their own personal use, and how many? Because I'm sick of sitting here like a dead duck, not knowing the information. Because I'm sick of sitting here like a dead duck, not knowing the information. I'm sick of it and I want to know the answer. And I, I encourage and insist that every one of you supervisors call me personally and tell me what the facts are because I'm tired of this.
Thank you, I guess.
Okay, thank you. Next caller, 7429, star six to unmute and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, good morning. This is Robi Tenorio and I, I'd like to bring everyone's attention to the public comment letters. That, there was a letter submitted that was signed by the North Coast Environmental Center, Citizens for Sustainable Humboldt and EPIC. And that letter is not talking about shutting down the industry. It's talking about seeking data. And I'm personally, I'm not asking for more regulations or less regulations. I'm asking for data and for the county to follow the ordinances because I, I really feel that we probably all want the cannabis economy to succeed. We all probably want healthy streams and rivers, but it can't be one or the other. And so how best can we do that? What can be done to, to make it easier to achieve best practices? What can the county do to help develop more ways to support those practices like rain catchment and the use of renewables? But unfortunately relying on the somewhat vague and simplistic assertion that we're not over the caps and so that doesn't, you know, there's less impact, that doesn't, that doesn't really help us. The staff report says that there was more cultivation sites before and so we're in a better place, but that doesn't really bring into account the size and the growing method of them. You're not, you're not really addressing the social or the environmental impact when you just don't have a way of accurately measuring them. Relying on the simple equation for that doesn't work. And also when this was started, wells weren't really taken into account at the onset and they're, they were kind of pushed by the state and I understand why everyone went for them. They were, and now they're a big part of, of water supplies. And so we really need to, to get the data on that. Also, the staff report stated that they, that the Planning Commission has been giving the sort of direction on it, but that my observation is the Planning Commission is constantly wanting input from the supervisors on how to follow the ordinances. So the, the Planning Commission hasn't established standard conditions. They, they want those conditions. Anyway, we need the data. We need to know what's going on and that does not mean that you have to shut down the industry. And I think we all want it to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, 3116, star six to unmute. You'll have three minutes.
Great. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Wonderful. My name is Shannon Hughes. I'm a resident of Willow Creek. My husband and I own a small farm and we operate it ourselves. I'm going to say some things that have already been said today, but I'm going to stick to the main points. We need to stop this bias against cannabis specifically. We need to start genuinely fostering parity with our industry to other industries. Those that are opposed to cannabis, because clearly that's what it is, need to listen to the data. There is monitoring data that does exist that we are contributing to every single year from our farm. So that is being collected and it will continue to be collected every year. It's great to build this data set and I urge anybody who is opposed to cannabis to look into the Water Board, Fish and Game, all of these, all of these organizations that we are already reporting our water usage, electrical usage, et cetera. We have to stop focusing singly, and not we, the Measure A proponents, need to stop focusing singly on an industry that is shrinking, not growing. Others have already addressed the data from the Berkeley study. That speaks for itself and it cannot be ignored. So just want to point that out. Cannabis needs to stop being singled out. We are the ones that are cleaning up after previous property owners, but a lot of them were not growing and we're cleaning up after the logging legacy issues. We are improving the land that we are growing on and that cannot be ignored. If the proponents of Measure A and the environmental organizations truly care about watersheds, why was Hannah White, a cannabis cultivator, the only person today to speak out about the Delta Conveyance? That, to me, spoke volumes today, but Mark Thurman got up there and didn't mention anything about that and no one else brought that up except for a cannabis cultivator. We are your neighbors. We are not monsters in the hills that are degrading our environment. We are actually improving the land that we live on. We're improving things for the wildlife. We are also your community volunteers. We all serve our communities and it is so, we are so tired of being beaten up by people that don't know us, don't care to know us and want to continue their bias because it's what they've always known. The proof is in the data. The proof is not in bias from armchair experts because that's what we're hearing. So I just really urge everybody to follow the existing data. We are monitoring, we are collecting data. Please follow the data. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, sorry, 7718, star six. You'll have three minutes.
Hello, Kim Swawwowska here. I'm the first one to strongly support the monitoring. I think it was going to be one of the few benefits of the whole program so that we could actually understand in the watershed where the water is going, so that we can encourage and enable everybody, the residents, the farmers, everybody to, to forbear. The study is necessary. People keep saying, yeah, they have a little data collected on their personal farm or something. That's not the big picture. It's fixed overall problem. We need the big picture. I hope that this will go forward in conjunction with the state. Really appreciate a lot of people coming to speak today. Really appreciate Scott Bauer coming to speak today, especially Sunshine and a few other people out there. Some people seem to think there's a, everybody is out just to dim the cannabis. I'm basically in favor of the environment and hopefully we can clear off of what we have going on now and fix a lot of our problems. Our fish are pretty well non-existent. And a lot of its location, unfortunately, a lot of these watershed areas ended up being in one stream, one neighborhood. And I think those needed a little more attention. They're still there. My question is that there's still 12 out of the 60 or whatever there. That still could be enough to, on a small tree, don't know the situation, but specific analysis, each of these little tributaries needs to be made so that we can keep everybody at peace. Really appreciate Robi calling in and really appreciate all the time she's spent working on things such as getting rid of the generators and forbearance. Thank you for having to speak today.
Thank you.
Next caller, 7108, same thing, star six to unmute and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Good morning. This is Bonnie Blackberry. I just have a few comments on a section about the ordinance modifications in this report. Where it says that most of the issues raised in Measure A initiative are addressed in the existing ordinance. Well, maybe they're addressed, but I don't believe they've been enforced and there's been lacking the proper monitoring to assure compliance. It goes on to talk about things such as annual review for compliance when the ordinance says yearly inspection. So those are like two different things. Conditions for approval are like covering all the issues, but timely follow-up to ensure that the conditions are complied with. Definitely need more attention as those in the next agenda. And it talks about the impacts of water use. And sounds like, well, there's more precipitation from going into the groundwater than coming out, so don't worry about it. Different parts of the county, I live in the southern, kind of southern, eastern parts of the county where the drought has been much more impacted here. And this year we caught an inch more than last year so far of rain and, which is well below what it used to rain like here. So, um, let me see. Oh, and the overall number of cultivation sites have been reduced, therefore it's likely that water use within the watershed has been reduced. Well, watershed, the site is one thing. It's how, how large they are and how much water use. Is it for one crop a year? Is it for five crops a year? Growing methods have changed a lot since 2016.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next caller, 4231, star six to unmute and you'll have three minutes.
Hello, Board. This is Sean Cherry and I'm an owner operator of a farm here in Sandin Creek and I also wanted to say the proponents of this analysis are, I mean, really making it unwanted suggestion and as resolution says you must only conduct this analysis if we go over the acreage cap. Not only is it unwanted, but it is redundant since the analysis has recently been done by the Berkeley School. And yeah, thank you. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Next caller is 9687, star six to unmute. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Supervisors. This is Kelly Quodis with Margaret Visers. Just wanted to make a few points. The first is that there are installed water gauges and the water rates do have monitoring by the State Water Resources Control Board. Another thing is I wanted to remind the Board that the, of the data that Director Ford just mentioned regarding 378,500 gallons of recharge, of water recharge per year per acre. That means a five acre farm will recharge the waterways by nearly 1.9 million gallons. Another point is that I want to remind the Board that many of the Fish and Wildlife projects are often due, that, that still exist are often due to the agency requiring farms to replace culverts to withstand a 100-year flood event. That's a flood that may happen well after we are all gone. So many of these culverts function well as they are and the cost to replace them by a small business that is struggling to survive is a really tall order. So we're not surprised that 65% of the farms have not had the resources to meet this requirement. But thankfully we are engaging with grant opportunities to work with the agency to make a lot of these improvements. But it is a slow process and it will take time. The last thing I wanted to mention is that the report clearly shows that this program is significantly below the 2016, or 2018 DIR baseline due to such significant attrition. We believe that the remaining legal farms should be allowed to utilize all the space that they have to run their farm in the most practical way. So we are asking that the Board request the removal of the unwritten policy limiting propagation areas to only 10%. For those with pre-existing disturbed areas that would have minimal water usage for propagation, they should be given the opportunity to stop cramming their plants into an area that creates inefficiency and unnecessary overhead. This is a really important change that would help a lot of farmers to run much more effectively and efficiently. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next caller, 4397. I'm sorry, star six to unmute and you'll have three minutes.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Zach Matthews and my family and I own a small cannabis farm outside of Garberville. We have a 5,000 square foot permit. And most of the things I want to touch on have already been said. I just kind of wanted to bring some numbers along with it and some of the things that I've seen going on in my community here. As far as cannabis's impact on the overall environment, you know, there's over 600,000 acres of agriculture presently in Humboldt County and there's less than 350 acres of cannabis. And so when, when discussing things like, you know, road impacts and, and water impacts and environmental impacts, I think all agriculture should be taken into account, not just cannabis because it's such a small fraction of the land use here and it, it all needs to be protected. We have over 51 million gallons of, of water that falls on my property annually going off Garberville's annual rainfall. And we store 50,000 gallons, so less than a tenth of a percent of that. And if we don't store it, we don't, our plants don't get it. You know, none of the water from our well goes, goes to our garden. And like Craig had said, you know, we monitor all the water on our property. I water, monitor my domestic water usage too, even though it's not attached to my cannabis at all. And, and, you know, in, in the area here, this time of year, I would see, you know, tons of trucks going up the hill with trailers full of dirt and PVC constructing new greenhouses. The roads are, are extremely empty right now. And like the previous commenter said, there's a lot of logging going on. I see a lot of heavy trucks going up and down our road. And, and our community of Garberville, it, it ghost town these days and I'm extremely depressed. And it doesn't take rocket science to understand that the failed cannabis legalization has a big part to do with that. And I just want to thank everyone for being here today and working on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I clicked happy there. Star, 0679, star six, unmute and you'll have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Cassandra Thalia Pharo. I am the owner of Skyline Farm. We are located in the Redwood Creek watershed. We, as members of the Seala Creek watershed, have been extremely proactive in watershed restoration and forbearance for decades. I think I'm on our third LSA renewal for our property and I would just like to reiterate, you know, the equalization of the industry standards and the inequality of what's required for cannabis comparatively to the, the very small footprint that we have. And this really just seems like it's more of an agency issue of all these reports and monitoring from all these different agencies, the Water Board, CDFW, we've done biological studies, all of it. Who's collating it? Who's collecting it? Who's, you know, what, what is it for if nobody's actually looking at it? And then just kind of the overall economic impact of the Humboldt County cannabis. I also own the Greenox Distribution and Processing Facility in Eureka. And, you know, this dwindling number of farms that are our clientele makes it really hard to look into the future and know that these number of farms are going to be supporting what's left of the cannabis support services in Humboldt County. So, yeah, it feels like Groundhog Day. The staff report, I appreciate that the staff report, you know, is, it's not really an issue. The green rush is over. It's, if all people are asking for is this monitoring and these reports to be publicized and collated into something that the county can then provide for ordinance, then that's the issue. So I support that. I don't support furthering any kind of regulation or 3.0 ordinance. We, we can't afford anything else because all this is being paid for by the farmers through their permit fees. So, and I would also support, you know, reduction in Measure S or just elimination of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Bone, are there any more callers in the queue?
All right, I see here I have one more live body up here standing. Welcome.
Good morning, all. I'm Clarence Hostler. I live in the fifth district, um, a member of the Hoopa tribe. I can actually say I'm a descendant of, of survivors of genocide and the use of our Aboriginal territory by county governments, by corporate America has resulted in a foul Trinity River. And specifically about this issue, about this, um, document that I found, I, I started, I started paying attention when, when I, um, when, when I started reading the Measure A arguments. And so, so I went to, to the Hoopa tribe's, uh, tipa manager, Ken Norton, and that's when I found that the Hoopa tribe was in favor of Measure A. And, and specifically about the county not managing the way they said they would with their ordinance, that was their main argument. And that's all that I'm asking today is that the county manage based on what they agreed to with this venture of commercial cannabis permits. Now about, about water quality mon- monitoring. UC Berkeley, yes, that's a big name, but I know that our tribe has been water stewards of the Trinity River for something like thirty-five years and they've been monitoring. And what, what report I got from Ken Norton is that of, of the five tributaries on the Hoopa reservation, they're monitoring each, each stream, each creek and it's the southeast or southwest corner Campbell Creek and Milk and Supply Creek have visibly and measured that water has decreased. So where is it going? Where is it going? And what they've done is, is compared, you know, did an overlay of when, when it was a green rush, water started showing up as, you know, a decrease in water flow in those two creeks. And that's, that's where, where I hope that the county will, can utilize Hoopa tribal and other tribes monitoring numbers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the board. We can take five minutes, all right? Okay. We're back here at twenty after eleven. It's actually six minutes. Nikki, ready? All right. With that, I'll bring it. John, you don't have anything?
I, I think that the things that I would respond to, I addressed as part of the, uh, presentation and, uh, in the sake of time, I'm, I'm not going to repeat all that.
That'd be fine. Thank you. I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. Thank you for the report and thank you for the public comment. Um, I just had a couple of questions, um, Director Ford. I see on the, um, staff report, is there a direction you're seeking today or, and there's, this is going to be a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Secondly, why or do we not even need to change anything? And thirdly, um, how many applica- new applications are coming in daily, weekly, monthly?
So that was a three-part question. So in terms of what direction are we seeking, um, staff doesn't have a agenda here. Uh, we're bringing this report for your consideration. We do recognize that as part of the Measure A discussion, there were, was some comments that were made relative to the possibility of a three-point oh. There was some comments made in terms of perhaps reducing the cap or changing the threshold for notification. Just wanted to, uh, bring those up. Not that we're looking to do that, but, uh, in case the Board is interested in pursuing those, we don't believe that there is anything that's pressing that needs to be done right now to address the circumstances that we have. In terms, I know the third one was how many applications are coming in daily, weekly? We're not seeing new applications come in. Mostly what we're seeing come in are applications for either substantial conformance or a minor modification where somebody's changing something about their existing permit. And so mostly about restructuring permits. There really are not a lot of new applications coming in. I think there have maybe been five in the last two years.
Okay, so the cap discussion, um, I mean, we haven't reached the cap anywhere and I, even i- in the Trinity watershed, you said fifty percent, but it said forty-three, um, so it's not even quite there. So that, um, it would be odd to me to reduce the cap for what reason, I wouldn't know and we're not, we're, we're decreasing in cultivation sites and we aren't getting five applications a month or any, it sounds like. And then with the probability of five hundred and thirty-eight farms, um, going on, well, they are going on suspension and whether they will follow through and, um, catch up their, um, back monies, that could be another reduction. I, I heard a lot of comment from the public and it, it's really sad to me that, you know, we heard, uh, logging, ranching, comparables and this type of conversation oftentimes, you know, it baits industries against each other because it, it doesn't feel fair and I, and I recognize that, but every industry is struggling in Humboldt County. It's not, uh, just cultivation or just logging or just ranching. And I do recognize that the unfairness that, um, that the cultivators, the cannabis community feels because those other industries aren't being targeted and they're, and things happen. You'd want to talk about, um, trucking on wet roads in the wintertime and those things happen and sometimes need to be watched better. And the, you know, there's a lot of water use with ranching as well. And so people see that when you're getting attacked and you see rain spigots going twenty-four seven on hay, you know, alfalfa fields and wonder what's, what's the difference? And so this conversation coming up again, um, and targeting cultivation permitting, um, again, it, it feels very attack, attackative, if that's the right word, towards the cultivation community. And I called you the other day and I said, well, why would we only be doing it with this industry? Why don't we, um, you know, uh, address other issues that create impacts? And, you know, you really didn't, there's not really a reason. It, it's because we can. And so I, I hope that we maybe can, um, do the monitoring that's required and, um, put this at rest for once and all and move forward and hopefully have, um, our cultivators that are remaining can have, be successful because when they're successful, our county is successful and our community is successful.
Presidente.
Thank you. I, I just took a couple of notes, um, based on the comments I heard and those we received in advance and, um, you know, I appreciate the report and the conversation. I want to start with a couple of thoughts about authority and jurisdiction. So, you know, I, I think we can serve as a place to talk about important issues in our community, but we don't necessarily have, um, permitting authority or, um, you know, direct authority over the implementation of all of those issues. And, um, it is not to say there's a lack of caring on my part or on our Board's part or our county's part. And, you know, I think we can still create a space to talk about the important issues in our community and raise them, which, you know, we've heard a lot of today. But we wrote this EIR and, um, we have, uh, you know, taken on the, the mantle of responsibility with that, um, to implement, uh, you know, monitoring and regulation around this industry in conjunction with partnering agencies. And we have the permitting authority, um, for this industry, whereas we don't with every sector and industry in the county. So I think that's an important distinction to make, um, and there, you know, there may be issues of fairness, um, but we are able to regulate, um, you know, the things that we can regulate and there are other industries and activities in the county that, that we just don't have that role in. Um, so it's kind of apples and oranges. So, so there's some, um, good points made today about fairness and, um, you know, we're in a different role in some of those issues as opposed to this particular one. I definitely think we can and should share our opinion on water policies at the state level, um, but we, we also don't directly control these, but I do appreciate those being raised and we'll definitely be paying attention to those in the, you know, in the coming days and weeks and months. It's clear from, you know, reading the resolution, um, and, you know, the presentation that we need to continue collaborating with permitees and consulting with all the resource management agencies. Um, we have annual site visits, we have compliance, um, to be monitoring and following up on. And, you know, that looks like, it looks different for different types of violations. I also understand that, whether it's paperwork or whether it requires a follow-up visit or some other form of documentation. So I'm, you know, fully on board with continuing to monitor those, um, and making sure that we have that mechanism in place. I'd love to hear your thoughts about how that currently happens, John, and, and how we could do that more differently, um, because I think that's some of the feedback we've gotten. Obviously we are seeing industry attrition, um, and from what I saw today, it's really resulting in minimal, if any, net growth of, you know, permits or, um, area of cultivation. But meanwhile, what I'm starting to see and I think what we're, you know, what we assumed was coming is this, uh, maybe avalanche is a little bit of a hyperbole, but, uh, quite a wave of abandoned sites and then, um, permit revocations that we anticipate coming forward, either because people have never gotten a state license or, uh, many other reasons. But, um, some, you know, the state license issues are amongst the more glaring ones. So I, you know, I think one of the things I'm interested in talking about here today is, you know, how we can start the process of working with funders who have grant funds around cleanup and abatement, um, and those in the community, you know, a couple of folks who are in the cultivation community have contacted us saying, hey, I have expertise in this, I know what I'm looking at, um, I know what's, you know, what's on the site and, and how things need to be disposed of and cleaned up and, you know, pick, pick me, employ me to help with cleanup. And I'm interested to see how we could collaborate with folks in the industry to, um, to do that work if, if they're willing and interested. And that's a looming question to me is what we do with these sites and then, you know, who owns them ultimately if we have a lien or, uh, you know, they can't come, come up with the Measure S tax or they're abandoned. All of those things are, are big looming questions. And so based on that big picture, in my opinion, I, I want to see this picture more fully this year, um, as we see which sites are and permits are, you know, in operation. And then in March twenty twenty-five, when the Measure S deadline that we've set hits, you know, before we really make significant adjustments to this process, besides, you know, figuring out how we're going to start the process of abandon site treatment and remediation as well as, you know, where we can improving that compliance documentation process. So those are my initial thoughts, uh, based on your report and what I see around the timing.
Thank you. Supervisor, John?
Supervisor Bushnell wanted to respond real quick, if she could.
Well, I just, uh, John, is it March or December? I don't want anybody to panic.
It's March twenty, March twenty twenty-five.
It's March, okay. Thank you.
For, for payment of Measure S taxes, they needed to enter into an agreement by March of twen- the end of March of twenty twenty-four to have all the taxes paid by the end of March of twenty twenty-five.
Okay, I thought it was December, but it's March.
It was originally proposed as December during the board meeting. The board moved it back to March.
Okay, so a little less than a year. Okay, thanks for that clarification.
Supervisor, John?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Well, first of all, thank you all for being here today and those on the phone and those that sent in letters for your input. It's a, a good conversation to have, a lot of great input. I absolutely agree that indoor, illegal indoor is growing again and, uh, is absolutely a, a very tricky element of enforcement, but something we need to delve into. I also wanted to thank Hannah White for being here and for her email correspondence to a large community of people about the Trinity River diversions. Just to update the community on what we're doing as a county in regards to the Trinity River, uh, we were actually given fifty thousand acre feet, no less than fifty thousand acre feet as a, a right to Humboldt County when the dams were put in on the Trinity. And that was a nineteen fifty-nine contract that has never been honored and, uh, the county did make an attempt to call for that water to keep it in the river for the fish. Uh, and that request was not honored by the Bureau of Reclamation because they said they needed the data to be able to conclude that the use of the water was actually going to do what it was supposed to do. So our staff, Hank Seaman and others in the county have been working for quite a few years with, uh, the Hoopa tribe and the Uroch tribe to come together and work together, hopefully also with Trinity County, to call for that water to be kept in the river for fisheries. We know that we have to be able to provide the science to be able to get that request to be honored. So our staff were able to get a half million dollar contract. They hired Stan Tech and had, uh, a number of workshops and, and convenings to really arrive at the science behind how that water would be used and how it would benefit our fish, whether it's, uh, spring Chinook or Steelhead or Coho. And so we have now completed those studies and the next step we have to do is go back and actually request that the State Water Board amend our water right, uh, to be able to then ultimately call for that water. So over the next year, we will be making the call for that water to keep it in the river. And yes, there is a lot of concern about diversions and the Delta project and everything else that also still have to be tracked and provide input to, but I wanted to thank you for bringing that forward for our community. You know, I'm a little bit disappointed in the state part of, uh, water storage. There was a law that was passed that basically said that if you're collecting water off a hard surface such as a roof and storing it in tanks, that theoretically you would not be taxed as a property improvement. But unfortunately that has not actually, uh, borne fruit here in Humboldt County in the way that we're implementing it. So we need to do better at that. We need to not only make sure that we are allowing for that waiver, but really it should be for more than just roofs into tanks. What about ponds? What about all kinds of other water storage, et cetera? So that's something I believe we need to continue to press the state on in regards to, uh, creating those property tax waivers for water storage and not just for cannabis. I think the thing I appreciate the most about today's meeting and many others before in Groundhog Days, uh, is that we all know that it has not been fair to focus so much attention on just cannabis rather than look at all land use as a whole because it does all have an impact and we can do better. I mean, logging practices in the past were horrible, they've gotten a lot better, but we still can always make improvements and, and working on it. I'm getting ready to sell my first two loads of logs off my property from thinning and doing fuel reduction around my homes and, um, and that kind of thing. So I think a lot more people are going to be doing timber harvesting for fuel reduction and other matters in the future. You know, incentivizing good land use practices. I think anybody that's been paying attention knows that for the five and a half years I've been on this board, I have been ringing that bell and saying that we need to have more incentives for good land use practices and not just for cannabis, but for all land use, whether it's urban or rural. You know, it's long overdue that we start rewarding landowners for doing the right thing by protecting the soil, the water, the wildlife, or whatever it might be, the water storage, et cetera. And I've tried for twenty-five years to try and get a concept of a stewardship act forward whereby people would be able to write off the expenses of stewardship practices, much like we incentivize solar for a while, although even that's decreased in its incentive base over the last administration or two. in its incentive base over the last administration or two. So how do we do that? Well, ideally, the state and the feds would be on board and we'd create broad incentives that encouraged, you know, good practices at every level, like I said, including urban. In the urban setting, you can also do things that protect the environment. So it's high time we do that, but it's been a heavy lift, whereas I think that there is an opportunity at the county level to actually implement something. And we've talked about this and, you know, the HCGA letter talked a lot about how there have been many times over the last several years that we've talked at the board about creating incentives and directed staff to come back. And there's been some attempts at that. The outcome was it seemed to be too cumbersome, too expensive to try and implement. And because we have not implemented a Measure S tax of any significance for a number of years, that is not a direct way to be able to do it, although I believe it is, because there are many people who owe Measure S taxes and incentives. And my kudos to all those that are current or are actively paying in a payment plan on their Measure S taxes or their back fees. I applaud you for that responsible act on your part. But I do believe that we could not only utilize an incentive program against back owed taxes whereby, let's say you put in storage and forbearance, or you do road measures to reduce erosion, or you convert to solar or wind rather than diesel generators, et cetera, then why not have a program where we allow people to write that expense off of their Measure S tax that is owed? And even in the letters we received in this last few weeks, many people said that they do believe that the Measure S tax will probably come back, that this board will at some point in the future probably reinstitute that. I think this last year it was at 10%. Two years before that it was zero and the year before that was at 15. But it probably will come back because it was actually something that the cannabis industry themselves pushed hard for to be able to say, we're responsible. We want to pay our share, our part of all this. And I know right now is not the best time to really even think about that because the market crash is still very real and resources for people are very limited. But if the tax did come back and we had a way of being able to say, if you're doing these practices that are good stewardship, we'll let you write that off against your taxes owed. I still believe that's a very viable thing that we ought to move forward at the appropriate time. There was some talk in some of the letters we got about the equity programs. And we talked about this two weeks ago. And some of the unintended consequences are that it costs the county a quarter million dollars out of our general fund to manage those equity funds. And the state's requirements and restrictions on those equity funds have increased that have made it more cumbersome and more difficult to manage, requiring one-to-one match if we ask for over 500,000. We do have a current program of, I believe, 1.4 or 5 million that is coming out. The staff are rolling out here in the next several weeks for reapplying. And if you qualify under the equity requirements, that you would then be able to get some form of equity payments towards storage and forbearance, roads, energy or other things that are in the qualifying documents. And some people have said, well, what if I've paid all my Measure S taxes and I don't owe any back fees? Am I going to not be able to get any equity funds? And, you know, those are what I consider to be the really good actors. Or those that budgeted carefully or, or whatever the reasons were, they paid their taxes, they paid their fees. And I have been lobbying very strongly to make sure that they are also included in being eligible for these equity funds. But it does not look to me like these are going to be a long-term source, whereas if we had an incentivized program within the county's process of Measure S tax, maybe we could create some sort of a long-term program that would further incentivize all these good practices. I agree that I think on the whole cannabis has not got the impacts on the landscape that other industries may have. But it is also true that when you look at it from a broad lens of a watershed-wide scale, which is mostly what's being talked about, those impacts theoretically are spread out all over the place. But in reality, they're not. I would submit to you that the community of Honeydew has seen a much greater impact. Maybe it's from a social perspective. Maybe it's actually environmental from light leakage or any number of other things. But, you know, Honeydew has changed dramatically in the last seven or eight years. And there are other places where, when you think about a cap or acreage cap, permit cap and acreage cap over a whole watershed, that's one thing. But when you start looking at site-specific impacts, it can be very different. One operation could absolutely have a dramatic impact on a spring or a water supply like Supply Creek or Mill Creek or some of these others where you get a concentration of activity and it can absolutely have an impact on the flow in those streams. Scott Bauer brought up the issue of Larrabee Valley and the wells there. And what is the relationship between that cold groundwater storage and the need for flows in the, in the Bandouzine River for, you know, Steelhead and Salmon and things like that? So I absolutely agree that I think that there are some situations where impacts are significant. But it's when you drill down into the site specifics, because that's what, you know, we always says, well, it depends. It depends on what's going on in that specific area. I'm not suggesting that I think we need some big massive monitoring program, a whole bunch more burdens or whatever. But I do think that there are areas where the impacts have been greater than other areas and probably deserves a close look at that. On some levels, I actually believe that perhaps, you know, a cap in Honeydew might be appropriate to say, we already reached something that's probably beyond what really should have happened. So, you know, I don't know how we deal with that specifically because it's different than watershed caps, watershed acreage, things like that. I appreciate the farmers in particular, not only ones that are doing storage and forbearance for conditions, but we heard today some testimony from folks that it's not even a condition of their permits, but they're still doing it. They're monitoring every bit of their water use. All of us, whether we're growing cannabis or not, ultimately need to be doing that. That's the arena that I think we're all heading into. And I applaud folks for doing that storage and forbearance. And again, if we can incentivize that further, we'll get more of that going on. Roads, roads and roads. One person said, you don't need to look at mine. We've taken care of it. And, you know, it really wasn't all that fair because so much of that, that road stuff was legacy roads from previous activities from previous landowners that didn't have to deal with those things, even though the laws at that time said they should have. There's been laws in place for a long time that said you can't put soil in a place where it can enter a stream. The Porter Cologne Act under the Water Board or other, other laws. But bottom line is, you know, some of the worst roads around are our current county roads. And that's not because we're trying to be irresponsible. It's because we simply don't have the budget for our roads anymore. So I hope you'll all consider supporting our roads measure that's going to be on the ballot in November to try and start getting a handle on earmarking funds for dealing with our county roads. It's somewhat amazing to me that we require this intense road level of treatment, like somebody said, 100-year flow for culverts, et cetera. And yet our own roads are in horrible condition. So we've got a lot of work to do to bring our own roads into shape and make that happen. And we're going to try and turn that corner in November. And, you know, people are already spending the money that they might spend on a half cent sales tax on, you know, car maintenance because of potholes and everything else that happens, let alone the delay of emergency response and all kinds of other things. So I think we have a long way to go. I appreciate this report from the department. But as I said, I think there are site-specific conditions where impacts are great. And we need to figure out how we're going to deal with that. Watershed-wide, I think we're doing pretty good. And I'm just going to double down and say, it's not just about cannabis. We as a board really need to figure out how to think about all of this land use and not try and tighten it down or regulate the heck out of it, whatever, but how to figure out how to incentivize good practices with all industries, not just cannabis. So, thank you.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. So I, you know, we have a lot of dates coming up, March being one that will, we will have an idea of how many cultivators or farms are going to be falling out of that role. And I think if I could make a stab at just accepting this presentation and coming back in March or April, March, April of 2025, after, you know, we really realize how many cultivators are left. You have a lot of numbers there. We also have a lot of payment plans that are going on with Measure S. If they don't complete those, then that's going to be a revocation of their permit as well. Am I correct, John?
Could be, yes.
Okay. And I think that it would be very detrimental at this time to start making up cap numbers or, or doing that work when we have 500 to 600 sites that could be not, not valid after March. And also with the, two things with us, what Supervisor Arroyo said about the decommissioning, that currently is in our ordinance, correct?
Yes, it is.
And so, you know, if you choose not to cultivate or you lose your cultivation license, there is a decommissioning plan that you have to follow. And if you don't follow, then it, and the site is recognized, then it would go through the abatement program that we currently already have, correct?
That is correct.
So I don't know that we need to add to that process when we already have that in place. The one thing that I, the other thing about the Measure S and incentivizing people that haven't paid their Measure S with putting in solar or whatever, as Supervisor Madron said, there are people that have entirely paid their Measure S and have done those things as well. And so if in the future we look at that method, then we would also need to look at the people that are current and have already installed those items to maybe credit them for future Measure S, just to make it equitable. And then the last thing I wanted to ask about was, and I'll make the motion at the end, but Margot Advisors referenced something to the 10% of nursery space, which when I was reading through the ordinance, there's not really a set amount. It's, and I asked you about this and you said it came from the Planning Commission, I believe, but it's a zoning administrator or someone that can set that amount? Can you kind of dive into that?
So in 1.0 and in 2.0, there were, you know, references to a kind of a nursery space or a clone room or something like that, that really didn't set a size limit. And then one of the things we started to see was people started to want to claim a fairly substantial area for nursery, sometimes as much as 50% of the cultivation area. And we thought that's not addressed within the environmental document, that hasn't been anticipated. The thing that the ordinance does allow, the zoning ordinance, not just the cannabis ordinance, but allows up to a 10% increase. And so that's where that came from. It's rooted in the zoning ordinance allowance to allow slight increases in operational area without having to redo the permit. And, and so quite frankly, we felt like that was an appropriate way to put a cap on, on that. And then we did take that back to the, started at the Planning Commission to see if it would be possible to really set a standard for what is nursery space. And it was actually the industry that kind of came out on both sides. Some were okay with it, some absolutely not. That's way too restrictive.
I remember that conversation and that Planning Commission meeting. So thank you for that. And I'm, I see Natalie's hand up, but I'm going to make my motion. If I could just make a motion to file and receive and file the report and to revisit this in April of 2025 after, you know, we know what kind of revocation is going to come forward with the rest of the permitting community.
Sure. I'll second that. I do have another question for John, though.
Yeah.
That's good timing. All right. So I am aware that we do have an abatement process. And I'm curious if in your estimation, John, do you, how's that going? Is everybody cleaning up their sites according to our ordinance?
Most people are.
Okay.
I think one of the things sometimes we're running into is coordinating between a new buyer and somebody who's selling and who's going to take care of stuff. But I think we're working through those. We are talking to the receivership, receivers for receiverships that we've been working with and they're interested in these properties. We are also exploring the concept that was presented in a letter where people within the industry would clean up sites and how that works. We're sometimes limited as governments. We can't just say, yeah, that's a good idea. Go and do that. We have to operate within the principles that we're, we're allowed to operate within. So we're exploring to see how much flexibility there is there to make something like that happen. Don't have an answer on that currently.
Okay. But it, do you feel that we have adequate resources to handle properties that have been abandoned or that are, where people are not following those procedures at this time?
At this time, we're okay.
Okay.
With the numbers that were presented today, you know, in five months, we could be looking at a different scenario. I hope not. But we're, we are preparing to be able to gear up if we have to.
Okay. That's helpful to understand in the greater context because I, you know, I think we all just frankly don't know what will happen in the next six to 18 months with a lot of the, yeah, cannabis businesses. And, you know, I've appreciated that there are resources through different state agencies and likely others as well, but for, you know, cleanup of sites. And, you know, in the past, it's been more focused on trespass grows on public lands. And now I think, you know, we're seeing that there are resources available for, for cleanup as well outside of that context. So I support this, you know, motion. And it's not to say we don't care about all the interrelated issues that were brought up today. But seeing this, you know, wave of change, I think we really need to just get more information before we make any substantive changes.
Supervisor Madron?
Well, I support the motion. I'm wondering if we need to add to it or if we can just offer direction to staff that, could you connect with the tax assessor and find out why we're not providing tax waivers on storage? Or do you, you already know the answer to that?
I, I will, but I think I do know the answer. I need to confirm this. I think that's specifically related to residential.
Yep.
Very, very restrictive waiver, in other words.
Yes.
So it sounds like we as a board need to correspond with our legislative representatives and with the DCC and others about getting that change to occur. And it shouldn't just be for cannabis. We ought to be having a tax waiver for storage and forbearance. I mean, it won't be long before all of us, and we had a great year this year, right? Actually, two wet years in a row. But we'll be back to drought years again. That's California. And we all will be having a 5,000-kallon tank with rainwater storage off our roof at some time in the future, if not next year. So that's something I guess we could bring back at the board and maybe offer some direction. But I think it'd be good for us to correspond with our lead reps on the need for that. But we can do that separate from this motion.
It's completely separate.
Yeah.
And it's been brought up in, 10 years ago. It's been brought up eight years ago. Mari addressed the board on it. I think we can go back and look at it. It's not as easy as, because you'd need the rest of the state and LA doesn't like it for some reason. All right. It's been moved and seconded. I haven't said anything. I'm like Supervisor Madron, just thought I'd listen. We're nowhere near the caps. That's great. We put a lot of time into the caps, getting where we did. We've got a whole bunch of people in the room that should be out farming and not sitting here. But again, here we are. I did get contacted by the Farm Bureau and then by a few dairy farmers. And they were just as worried as they were before that they were going to get sucked in in the aftermath because they have been. And just like Sigma and the O River Valley, we shouldn't be in it. We're in it by a half percent and we shouldn't be in it because of the way it was done. But with that being said, they are, they're monitoring. O River runs six miles wide. We've got 60 years of historical records on that. So it's been moved and seconded. I, we can look at this in a year. I mean, and I think this does not stop any of the state agencies we keep talking about, but it doesn't stop any of the state agencies from monitoring more water if they want, because I don't know if we have the fortitude, the cash and the manpower to do it. And as far as the good actors and the bad actors and Measure S who have paid and everything else, I think you could probably implement right in there and say student loans and figure out, I paid all my student loans. What am I going to, what, how come they're getting theirs paid off? I mean, it's, it's, it's a tough deal. For you guys that have paid them, thanks. Appreciate it. We need to do more for you. I think that's I think that's why we had, we tried and we, and for some it was very successful, the Trellis Program. We tried to give as many funds back so we could make, so we could put in those roads in Colbert, so we could get reimbursed, so we could get the water storage. I asked John yesterday, out of all our legal permits in the watersheds, how much of that is ponds and stored water? And I was told basically all of it, but, so I mean, we're doing the things that are right and the cannabis phobia runs strong, but as it's been said over and over, I think a lot of these statistics would have been great, you know, to print those out for Measure A and it probably would have been 85, 15, but 76 is, I've been told, is overwhelmingly support. So with that, I will take a. Supervisor Bushnell.
Well, I'm just wondering, Director Ford, I put April in there. I don't know that that's really, I didn't even ask you, I'm sorry. Should I take the date out and just bring it back when we know?
I think we'll have a pretty good sense by next April. It may be later in the month to allow the treasure tax collector to see what has happened.
Well, if I could just amend to 2025 and then when you're ready, you could.
Okay.
Would that be more?
That's fine.
Okay. Is that okay with the seconder?
It is, thank you.
Okay.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Nikki?
Just one second, please. You just said 2025.
January 31st.
All right. Thank you, Supervisor Madron.
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo.
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell.
Yes.
And Chair Bone.
Yes, thanks, you guys. All right, we're going to, we're going to get a couple of things out of the way before we take a short lunch break, I guess. And there's two things I'd like to do. I think this next one will go really quick just to get it off our plate since John's sitting at the plate. The revocation of the conditional use permit, 5,000 square feet. We can, I want to open that public hearing and everything that we asked for at the last meeting and this, and hope to get it done, nothing's been done.
That is correct, Chair. We brought this before the Board of Supervisors, I think a month ago, and with the idea that the applicant or the permit holder had contacted us the day before the hearing and wanted to address the issues. They have not been addressed. We have attempted to contact the applicant, we have sent letters to the applicant, we've sent emails to the applicant, we've posted the site to make sure that we were communicating appropriately and unless something's happened within the last two hours while I was sitting here, we've heard nothing. So our recommendation would be that because of the violations that exist on the site and because of the lack of responsiveness of the applicant, that you find that the revocation is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, that you adopt the findings contained in the resolution identifying the violations and the rationale for revocation and that you revoke the permit for Highway 36.
Do you want public comment first?
Is there a public comment on this item? Saying none.
I'll make a motion to.
There's one hand up.
Oh, wait, is there a hand up?
Just raised, just raised right as you closed it, but if you want to take it, I'll unmute.
Yeah, I'll take it.
Okay, 7108, star six to unmute. You'll have three minutes.
Um, yes, this is body factoring. I submitted written input for this. This is one of the not good growths, which the people are coming from the war advocating. I wish they were all people like that, but this is a permit that was issued in 2019. And my big question is, how far out of compliance? Because if you put a requirement that says you've got to do this within 60 days, but you just keep on assuming and do nothing, and you have, it appears your first annual permit, more than a couple of years later, so much for the annual inspection. Anyway, if you put a condition there and it's not enforced, it's like, it just really confuses me why that's happening. And maybe you could explain why it wasn't considered out of compliance until 2020. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Bushnell?
I'll just make a motion for staff recommendations for revocation of the permit.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Chair, could I just jump in? Could you just make sure that the, you ask the applicant to raise their hand or permit holder to raise their hand?
If the applicant is out there in, it's not Ross, is it? Okay, good. In the audience or if you're in the queue or listening, star six, star six.
Star six to unmute. To raise your hand.
Star nine to raise your hand. Any of the above. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? None. Hillary?
You ready?
Oh, there you are. How, how long are you, Hillary?
I've got about 11 minutes to share with you, then I'm going to answer your questions.
15 minutes. Let's do it.
Let's do it, Hillary.
All right.
Because you got to get back to her, save McKinleyville. We can't keep you that long.
You got to get back to the farm.
Yes, you do. Scott in charge is why you're here? No?
McKinleyville?
Yes.
Okay. Whoever wants to forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What? You can pull chairs up all the way across.
Do you have a, our PowerPoint? It's.
You can come to the podium. How do you want to get it, Hillary?
Yeah, I like the podium.
I want to do a piece. I've got a lot of stuff.
We have a PowerPoint. Hi, I'm Hillary. I'm one of the co-executive directors of the McKinleyville Family Resource Center. There are three of us. The center at McKinleyville is an integrated services project led by the McKinleyville Family Resource Center and built by a cross-agency collaboration that includes the partners listed on the slide. And many other organizations participate in and support the project. And the center is a point of pride in our community. The purpose of the center is to make supports and services accessible to community members, and this means easy to get to, easy to understand, safe and respectful. And this requires addressing disparities caused by systemic racism and other structural inequalities as well as recognizing and addressing the harms caused by social service systems. And we are working together to reach this goal. There it is. So after receiving a training about land acknowledgements and local tribes, the initial onsite team worked together to create this land acknowledgement, which is displayed in the lobby at the center. The land acknowledgement is an example of staff making something together to integrate what we're learning. The center at McKinleyville sits on the unceded land of the Wiat tribe. The center sits near the mouth of the Badawat, the Mad River, the ancestral unceded home of the Wiat tribe. Humboldt County is home to many indigenous peoples, including the Wiat, the Yoroc, Karuk, Hoopa, Talawa and Wailaki tribes. The center at McKinleyville strives to live, strives to live up to its name, Dona Nuit Waduk. Wiat tribal members named the center, Dona Nuit Waduk, which means we help each other. While this is our goal, we also commit to be in partnership with and follow the lead of indigenous people, not forget that social services such as those offered at the center have a history linked to genocide and other harms, and approach our work with humility as learners and aware of our power to harm. The center at McKinleyville is dedicated to action. We believe that the best way to acknowledge and honor this land is to give it back to the Wiat tribe. We encourage you to join us in continuously finding ways to support indigenous sovereignty. So that's what the onsite team made together. And then I was going to talk to you a little bit about the approach of the center. I know you've received presentations before, but the things, some of the things that are really important to us. One is relationships. We believe that relationships with each other are the most important factor in our success in changing systems and that the people who are closest to the problem are closest to the solution. Staff at the center are intimately involved in figuring out how we will integrate services and improve access, including how we will address any troubles we encounter. We do this in group, groups of people who build relationships with each other while doing work together. And some of those are year-long leadership development cohorts who are charged with a chunk of the work, and others are smaller due groups where people doing a specific part of the work come together and to make improvements, try them out, and then to evaluate the results. Another thing I want to talk to you about is our safety policy, which you received at the presentation we did last year. And we see it as important to fostering an environment where we can have the types of relationships that we need to accomplish our goals. And the practices that are outlined in the safety policy provide a structure for us to hold ourselves and each other accountable. And the most well-worn page in my copy of the safety policy is the giving and receiving feedback page, but I also wanted to share a line from it that is important to me, which is innovation requires active learning where mistakes are allowed. And then the last thing I wanted to talk to you about is evaluation, because you received our evaluation report as attached today. The evaluation of the center looks at the effect of our collaboration as opposed to the effect of any one program. We use evaluation to inform our next steps and to encourage all of us to reflect on how we can improve our work. And then I wanted to give you one piece that didn't make it into the evaluation report because it's new. So we've seen increases in participation and programming at the center. We're the second busiest, busiest DHHS site for eligibility after Costa Street, and the Family Resource Center has seen a tripling of our single counts from about 2,000 people a year to 6,000 people a year since opening. And we have also seen our highest food pantry numbers ever, which is true across the county, and also the highest ever in our case management services. So I wanted you to know that you'll see something coming to you in a month or so, looking for an increase in our funding, and that is why. Next is going to be Robin, who's going to talk a little bit about our day to day.
Thanks. So as Hillary mentioned, we've seen an increase in visits to our food pantry, which accounts for a lot of the 6,000-plus visits, and that's only to the Family Resource Center programming. So our front desk also greets people that are coming to access any of the other services on site. We are also the food pantry that is open more than any other pantry in the county, just by one hour. But, so a lot of folks coming in the front door have meant that we're also looking for ways to collaborate with other partner agencies. So once a month, partners from places like Humboldt Domestic Violence Services, North Coast Rape Crisis Team and RCA also are in the lobby available to connect with people who are coming to receive services at the center. Our facility is also getting busier with other agencies who are using the space. DHHS regularly hosts trainings there, but also partners that aren't part of the core partners, including English Express language classes, UIHS staff meetings, Yoroc Tribal Council, Two Feathers Play Group, infant massage classes and Life Plan Humboldt, just to name a few of the agencies that have used the space. Aristea.
So the main reason that we wanted to come and see you all is to share with you some of the successes that we've seen as a result of the county being willing to participate in something that is innovative and different. So some of the things that we've seen, we have heard stories of warm handoffs for clients, a client who comes in to access the food pantry, shares that they have a vision challenge, so we're able to walk them down the hallway to meet with open door and get them access to services. We've got lots of examples of these types of interactions. There's an increased sense of belonging, partly due to art, but also partly due to language. So about 5% of McKinleyville residents speak Spanish only at home compared to about 12% of our visitors to the center. I believe we're also pulling in folks from other parts of Northern Humboldt that have a hard time accessing services. Participation in center events, so staff of all of our partner agencies are consistently showing up and participating in our learning opportunities, which are optional for them. And, you know, 82% of workplace, workplace climate survey respondents agree or strongly agree that all staff trainings led by the center have helped me understand the work of other programs, which again helps with those warm handoffs for the clients that we're serving. We've also got new connections between center partners. As an example of that, the FRC, we have a youth, or a young adult workforce development program that has started working very closely with Trinidad Ranch Ria tribal social services. And it's really exciting to see how particularly indigenous youth are viewing this partnership and being able to get paid to do things like go hang out with elders and cut wood and make things for ceremonies. So it's creating some really interesting processes. And then because of the existence of the center, it's creating a lot of opportunities that impact the broader county. So I will turn this back to Robin to talk about both our refugee resettlement and HIP.
Thanks, Aristea. This is our last slide, so. So you all heard us talk a bit about the Humboldt Income Program last year when we came to meet with you. And I want to share this slide because this shows where in the county we've received applications for the Humboldt Income Program. As of today, we have 145 people out of the 150 spots enrolled, so we'll be closing our enrollment window soon. And our fourth payment is going out this Thursday. We've already had 126 people receive at least one payment. And as a reminder, these are people who will receive $920 a month for 18 months, no strings attached, all of whom are people who are in their first or second trimester of pregnancy during that enrollment window. And what made us competitive for this funding through the California Department of Social Services was the relationships we had through our work at the center. We've also been able to secure other funding as a collaborative. So for example, Open Door received funding for a rural community's opioid response project that we're working together on. And we recently were asked by USCCB to support the resettlement of an Afghan refugee family in our community. And because of our partners, we were able to do that in a way that they were really impressed with. They said to us, for a community, we got three days' notice before they arrived. They arrived on the weekend, and they said for you to show up at the airport on a weekend and be able to get this family housed so quickly is legendary. And that is what the folks we've been partnering with there said. So, thank you.
And I think this is just our very long way of saying thank you for believing in this project. And what questions do you have?
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you for the presentation. It's very impressive, the amount of increase you've had, 6,000 people. That's just amazing, and thank you for the services that you do for the community. I do believe that you are attracting people from not just McKinleyville. It's, people are going to go to where the services are easier to, to manage or to get help with. And so that's a great service for all of Humboldt, not just McKinleyville.
Thank you.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Thank you for the presentation, and it was really cool to see the land acknowledgement and the way that it's been shaped, to really speak to the work that you do. I think it really resonated and made me, yeah, made me think more deeply about, about social services and about service provision in our community and kind of how that looks and feels for people who have different lived histories than my own. So thank you for sharing that. And I am curious about, last time you talked about, and last time I heard about the income program, there was still some question about how people were going to report and what kind of mechanisms were going to be used to help learn from that, about how people do end up spending their money. I know that it's no strings attached, but it helps to understand how people are using that to understand what kinds of programs need to be better funded and policy changes need to happen. So what's happening there?
So the evaluation is led by the Urban Institute, and that's the evaluator the state selected for all of the pilots. We don't have a lot of interaction with the participants. They can go through the whole process and never talk to us. But I will say, what I've seen a lot is people asking for letters of proof of income to give to landlords and housing authorities. So a lot of folks are using this. So a lot of folks are using this to access better housing for themselves and their families. And I've had multiple people in the community say to me, actually had someone this weekend say, oh, my rental opened up and someone receiving HIP applied, and they had the letter with the proof of income. And so we are hearing stories of people using the money to improve situations like that for their families. And we will, of course, have that evaluation report at the end, and we'll be able to see a little bit more. So I can only say those pieces anecdotally. Thanks.
Supervisor Madron.
Thank you, Chair. Oh, thank you for your presentation. And it's just been so wonderful to see, you know, all the hard work that went into even getting cited in the first place. Supervisor Sundberg was a great help to you and all of that. But just all the services, I mean, the pie chart was just astounding. I mean, it covers, you know, from Garberville all the way to Witchbeck and everything in between. So clearly, you're doing a lot of good things and things right. And we are very blessed in McKinleyville to have the center there, and I applaud you for all the great work that you're all doing there. And with that, I would make a motion to accept your report.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment?
Good afternoon, Board. My name is Eric Canega. I am with DHHS. I'm the site manager for the DHHS side of the center at McKinleyville. And one of my roles is to support the collaboration and integration of services. And I just want to piggyback on what everyone here said already on just how great the integration really is and what that impact is to our community. We're seeing a lot of increase in traffic in our businesses and people accessing services from community members to partner agencies. Recently, we've been hosting trainings by California Department of Social Services and their Justice Collaborative, where they focus on racial equity and implicit bias. Just wanted to share a quote from them that said they were truly blown away by the thoughtful and intentional design and inclusive environment that has been created there. And we often have people from the state swing by and see the project that we're doing there. We've had the California Legislative Analyst Offices recently participate in seeing the work that we do there, and everyone is just truly blown away by this project that we're doing, this integration, this ability to take DHHS and nonprofits, our tribal communities, open door, and just integrate those services, do those warm handoffs, and really benefit our community. So I want to thank them for the great work they're doing, and thank you, Board of Supervisors, for supporting it.
Great. Thank you. All right. Hillary, we talked enough. Thank you. We did, and I appreciate Supervisor Madron mentioning Mr. Sundberg's involvement because there was a lot of involvement by him and I and contractors and everything else, and Hillary calling every day, what's it gonna happen? No. Anyway, it's been moved and seconded.
Can I ask one more question?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
I just, I remembered that the California part of the budget process is considering elimination of the market match program, and I wondered if you'd heard from clients about concerns with that and whether there's anything you all are planning to do, you know, send a letter or anything like that around that issue. And that would be the market matches, I mean, I know you know what it is, for everyone watching, is the matching funds for CalFresh if people are buying local produce from local farms, so.
Farmers markets.
I would say that we are being asked to sign lots of letters right now for things that are happening in the budget.
Yeah.
And we're getting to the point where we're like, we need to figure out how we're deciding what letters we're signing and why, because there's, yeah, it's scary.
Yeah. Thanks.
I've always found that sign the short letters, the long letters have stuff hidden in them. All right. It's moved and seconded.
Chair Bone.
Yep.
Supervisor Bushnell.
Yes.
Supervisor Royal.
Yes.
And Supervisor Madron.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, kids. Well, I've got, these guys want to take a break, I imagine, because we've been doing this for almost three and a half hours. Uh-huh? Take a half hour? Well, I would, but I'm, you want to keep going?
How about till 1:00?
Do you want to?
No. Break till 1:00.
We are on a break till 1:00. Sorry for all those people that have stayed around.
Since I see, you want to do Wind Link real quick? It shouldn't take long, shouldn't it?
Good afternoon, Board. Scott Adair, Director of Economic Development for County of Humboldt, here today bringing before your board a memorandum of agreement regarding the Wind Link Initiative. Just some brief context, your board in November of 2022 passed a resolution giving staff explicit direction for supporting the community as it relates to the emergence of the offshore wind industry. That community support includes support for our businesses. And as an economic development agency, we've been thinking about what exactly it is that our business community is going to need if offshore wind does come to fruition so that they are able to engage in and participate in this industry. So we had some conversations with our local trades and contractors. Specifically, we worked very closely through the Humboldt Builders Exchange, which is an organization comprised of local general contractors, electricians, welders, HVAC companies, and other construction and trades-related industries, and identified that of the components or the subcomponents that would typically go inside of a turbine, that today there are approximately 30 or more components that a Humboldt County business could either manufacture, install, or service. We know, however, that those businesses may need access to capital for financing if they are in need of additional equipment or tools or other resources so that they can service or install those parts in the wind turbines. And so we have, under the, that November 2022 resolution, that direction, engaged with several community partners, including the Small Business Development Center of Northern California, Apex Accelerator out of Cal Poly Humboldt, the Redwood Chamber Foundation, the Eureka, Greater Eureka Chamber of Commerce, and REDEC, the Redwood Region Economic Development Coalition, have partnered with them to form the Wind Link Initiative, which is to provide those companies, those contractors and tradespeople who I had referred to earlier, with education, resources, access to capital, networking opportunities, other support, technical assistance, training, et cetera, that they might need in order to engage in the wind industry. We're currently funding this through some seed funding from our Additional Assistance Grant. We'll be working with partners to identify additional funding for this initiative as we move forward. We are working closely with Oceanetic, which is a nationwide, actually an international offshore wind trade alliance comprised of contractors and tradespeople and other suppliers of, and servicers of subcomponents. And we're also working with California Manufacturing Technology Consulting Group as we put this initiative together. So today, the MOU before your board, it's just for you to adopt and authorize the MOU and approve those activities as it relates to the MOU. And I'm available for any questions that you might have.
And this doesn't tie in with the other affiliates that are trying to get like, what's it, CoreHub or Co-Ad or?
No, this is a completely separate initiative of CoreHub, and this is much more focused on businesses and business support.
All right. Is there any public comment on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Any comments?
So just to be clear for the public and everything, basically, these funds that are being provided cover all the costs. We're not talking about general fund expenses here or anything like that.
Our support in this would be entirely grant-funded in the initial term, and then the partners under the MOU would look for other funding opportunities so that it could continue in perpetuity.
Great. So no general fund.
No general fund.
Thanks, Scott.
Yeah.
Still coming out of your pocket. They've just got a long ways to get it. Supervisor Royal.
I have a possibly silly question, but I don't know the answer to it, so I figure I'll bring it up here. I'm the Chair of REDEC right now, and should I, should we have the Vice Chair sign the agreement in my stead? Or should I sign as the Chair even though I'm county?
I think that's a great county council question, representing both entities.
I think that's something that we can look into and then have, we can have the...
Executive Director.
We can have the executive director or designee of the Chair sign at that point.
Since all the board members are elected, so.
Yep. Thanks.
All right. Motion?
Staff recommendations.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and thank you for your work on this.
Opposed none. Thanks.
Thank you.
Discussion now on the HUSCOW.
Is that Mr. Wilkinson?
Big it.
Sitting in a jigsies, though.
He's extra help. That's where he's got to go. Mr. Hansel.
Thank you, sir.
Tell us the bad news.
Chair, Chair Bone, thank you for having us here today. We are here to go over some, go over the 863 project and go over the current status and then go over some options that the board has today. To remind you, this is AB 109 funding. This is, as of 2012, public safety realignment. All those people that served previous state prison sentences were realigned to county jail. There's been a huge impact on our county jail. And just as a reminder and a plug, county jails are designed for those public nuisance-type issues, those misdemeanors, that were never meant to serve beyond one year in county jail. And so they're heavy into program services for the people that have drug addiction, are serial thieves, those kind of minor nuisances that judges can sentence people to county jail and that they get those, the help that they need to reform their behavior. But as we've seen across the state now with public safety realignment, is that severe, serious and violent felonies and severe offenses are being sentenced to county jails and for longer than a year. And our county jails are not designed to house people beyond a year. With that in mind, the state has released money over the last 10 years with 1022 and 863. These are proposals that we've, we've put in over those last 10 years. We were selected in 2015 for the jail expansion, and we were one of the people that, one of the counties that were selected. And this was a partnership between Public Works, the Sheriff's Office, probation, and DHHS. And I'd like to turn it over to Jake Johnson, our county architect, to go over, you know, our current status and run through a few slides and then be here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Sheriff. Yes, we are here today to talk about the SB 863 project and the current status. First, we're going to go over a little bit of the program background. We'll talk about the project summary of where we ended up, go through the project timeline briefly, and then talk about proposed redesign work, and then we will present the bid action options to you for discussion. So the SB 863 program appropriated $500 million for designing and construction of adult criminal justice facilities in the state of California and is awarded on a competitive basis. There is a $20 million cap on awards to rural and small counties. The Board of State and Community Corrections oversees the awards process. Awarded agencies like ourselves are required to provide up to 10% match in cash and/or in-kind contributions. Following our application, the Humboldt County received notice of conditional award on January 12th of 2016. So following that time, we designed the Community Corrections Reentry Resource Center, and, you know, the concept of the project was that there would be minimum security housing for guests that were being ready to be released and, as well as training rooms and area for programs to help, help the offenders stay out of jail by the time they're released. In addition, there would be a day reporting center where probation officers would be stationed. It would make it very easy for them to meet their future probationers prior to their release instead of sending them down the block where they sometimes get lost, but also provide programs to, kind of on an outpatient basis for people to come back into the jail and, you know, learn how to, how to get a job, you know, learn skills and learn how to interview for, for jobs.
And I'll just pick up just a little bit from there. This, this facility was, was really necessary. This is not something that we just came up with because there's $20 million floating out there. We have a day reporting center, and it is three blocks away from the jail. And we'd be surprised how many times when we say, you're released, but you have to go and report to the day reporting center to get, sign up for your classes. That moment of someone exiting the jail, they have, they have a decision to make. Do I go right to the day reporting center, or do I go home, or do I go back to my addiction? And sometimes they make that left turn instead of that right turn. And, and so this was going to fill that need of bringing that day reporting center and connecting it to the jail. And our goal was to have a step-down program to where someone who was serving the last 30 days of their sentence or longer, that they could integrate into out-of-custody programs while they're still in custody and sign up for these things. So it would be a seamless transition. And to have program intensity and all those things that are necessary to make sure that someone can have all the tools necessary to not reoffend and to see our, our reoffenses go down and see our recidivism rate go down. And so that was really the goal. This was, again, backed up by, by our Health and Human Services Director as well as probation and the Sheriff's Office. This is something that we jointly consider that this is necessary for our county to, to be successful with the people that are incarcerated. So thank you.
So a couple of pertinent details about this, this project is that it was intended to be built adjacent to the existing jail on the south side of the gravel lot. The building was four stories tall. The, the upper story was really a mechanical space. The third level would connect to the existing jail and allow for inmates to pass back and forth into those, into that facility, as well as provide laundry and food service to, to the project. The building was designed as a type I construction, which is heavy concrete and steel construction. The idea being that the, you know, if there's an emergency, inmates would not be able to just exit the building. They would need to be managed, and so the building needed to be very safe and to contain those, contain those prisoners in case of an emergency. So SB 863 was released in June of 2015. In August of 2015, your board authorized us to apply for funding. We applied, and in 2016, January 2016, we received a conditional award. Project programming was then completed, and we put out a design RFQ, a request for qualifications for a design team to work on the project. In January 2017, we awarded the project to NMR and Leonakis. They, they were, they are a good design team that has a lot of experience with correctional facilities. In January of 2018, we achieved project establishment with the State Public Works Board. At that time, the estimate was for the project, the construction, the hard construction... the construction, the hard construction estimate was about $17,171,000. In October of 2020, the preliminary plans were approved. So between 2018 and 2020, we went through a design process with, between ourselves and BSCC and the state, and put together what essentially is the final project. And the state approved our preliminary plans. Pretty much immediately, we had already begun working on our working drawings, which are the construction documents. And in December 2020, we submitted those working drawings to the state for review. At that time, the estimated construction cost was $18,407,000. We, in July of 2022, anticipating approval by the state fire marshal and the state of our project, we pre-qualified contractors to bid on the project. Public Works was requested to pre-qualify contractors due to some issues that we've had with other projects, other correctional projects in the county. And so we wanted to make sure we were getting the best qualified contractors to bid on the project. We ended up pre-qualifying six contractors for this work. The working drawings were finally approved by the state fire marshal following 22 months of review. In October of 2022, by February 2023, we were given the proceed-to-bid by the State Public Works Board. Bidding documents were released for bidding. At that time, the estimated cost was $22,430,000. In April, we received one bid. That bid was $34,997,000, which was approximately $13 million over our budget. So, given that number, we had some internal discussions, discussed with the CAO's office, discussed with others, and it was determined that the money for awarding that bid was just not available at the time. So we talked to our designers, and we tried to see if there was a way that we could reimagine the project and redesign it to get us back down into our budget. There were a lot of factors that led to this overage. A lot of them are discussed in the staff report. But I think, you know, it was really kind of a good thing for us to go back through that program and say, "Hey, you know, what do we really need to do here? You know, how can we still meet what we've promised the state at the beginning of this project without them saying, you know, 'No, that's a scope change, and we're going to take that money back.'" And so we spent a good deal of time trying to come up with a way to do that. And so the proposed redesign, we tightened up what we had. We decided to go with having more of a halfway house scenario. You should probably talk about that a little bit more.
So in an effort to try and still get this project across the finish line, is we've talked about an out-of-custody program, much like our Sheriff's Work Alternative Program, where we would have people actually staying in our facility, but free to go and under terms of a release. The idea would be that there's several... There's people that are in our community that if they go home, they're likely to re-offend. They're likely to start back into their addictive lifestyle. And so if we provide a space that is... That supports them in a program that maintains rules and regulations, that a lot of people would stay sober, would stay on their medications, that would show up to work every day, and that would be a part of our probation and our out-of-custody programs, as well as providing an opportunity for them to work in our Sheriff's Work Alternative Program. So there's a lot of pluses to have, essentially, an out-of-custody custody program. And so, like our swap program, as long as they adhere to all the rules, they can stay out of custody. But if they violate the rules, we'll put them back in our facility, and they would have to just... They would have to stay throughout their sentence. So that was an imagined project. This is... There's similar facilities like this throughout the state, and they have been successful.
One of the benefits of doing, reworking the program this way was that the building then could be converted to a type 5A light-frame construction building, which is a lot less expensive to build than what we'd originally designed. The reason why is because with this type of program, the inmates, or not inmates at this point, but the guests would be able to leave in case of an emergency. And, you know, they would have free access to exit if there was a fire in the building or anything else happening. And so that really brought down what the construction costs would be. However, ultimately, when we went through this project, the costs were still going to be about $8.49 million that we would need to add to the project to make this work. And that would have to happen pretty much immediately upon scope change with the State Public Works Board. So, some of the takeaways of the proposed redesign. The pluses would be that the staff-secure type 4 facility would allow for different construction type. We'd have reduced mechanical and utility areas. The design is a little bit more compact, and we'd only need $9 million additional, instead of $23 million additional to go back to the original design. So the minuses were that the scope change was not guaranteed by the BSCC. They're still kind of on the fence about it. And from our handlers at the BSCC, they were not sure that the BSCC Board would actually accept this as a scope change. They may actually say, "This is too much. We want to take the money back and give it to another county that had applied for this money." Staff-secure facility does not align with the Sheriff's Office's current operational philosophy, so it would be kind of a shift in the way that the Sheriff's Office would do things, and it'd make it a little bit difficult for them to get there.
He doesn't shift very well.
No comment.
And of course, we would need an additional $9 million to proceed with the project only. So, we come to the... What we're really here today to discuss, which is to take action on the bid that we did receive. We've got four different options here. The first is to accept the base bid, which the base bid has expired. We can't really do that at this point. Option two is to reject the bid and rebid with no design changes, essentially going back to our original design and see if we could have a better outcome. With the ongoing construction escalation, it's really unlikely to produce savings. The estimated supplemental funding is approximately $23 million at this point. And the funding is, again, not currently available on the county's budget. Option number three would be to reject the bid, redesign, and rebid. And that would be going with the potential redesign option that we've presented. That project's scope may not gain state approval. The estimated supplemental funding is $8.49 million. And additional funding will likely be needed later. Again, that funding is not currently available, and, you know, the design ultimately was not quite the way the sheriff is operating things right now. Option number four is to reject the bid and terminate the project. We would terminate the lease revenue bond agreement with the state, terminate the consultant agreements, and try and find a way forward. The facility and program needs of the county remain, and we would request that you direct staff to re-evaluate the current program needs of the sheriff, probation, and DHHS mental health offices, and have us come back and propose alternate options for addressing the needs without the SB 863 funding or with other funding opportunities. Now, I think it would be a good idea to take a look at these programs again, because again, we started this back in 2015. And of course, the way, you know, these programs operate changed in that amount of time. And so through all of this time period, we've been trying very hard to stick with the scope that we've given the state. We've promised them a certain building, promised them a certain number of, you know, a certain area, a certain number of rooms. Now, that program may have changed somewhat, and we may be able to achieve this, you know, what the county needs at this point in time using other funding or using the funding that's remaining in here along with other funding. And so that's where we're at right now. Are there any questions?
Yeah, a couple of them. Sheriff, what's the population of the jail?
280, 290?
With 390 with 100 available.
Yes, yeah, 417s are max, are rated max right now.
And then, so we redesigned this and everything else. Will it get back to being lost for two and a half years at the state fire marshal again?
That's very likely. It took a very long time.
Because I... And much, and I appreciate the commitment we made. And I remember, if I remember, the first time we put in, didn't we forget to put the $1 million in an account? We had to hold off for six months or something? Wasn't this the jail program?
Yes.
Yeah. And I remember the proceed... There's other counties that are sitting on this same problem that we're having. And I don't see it getting any easier because if the state doesn't have to give us the money, that means they have the money. And we're not getting much response from our local... I'm looking at the four option, much to the demise. I think a lot of this is... And maybe we take, somebody walked them down to the probation office at Fourth Street, but I don't know. I don't see any other way. We can't downsize it enough to make it work, it sounds like.
That is correct. I mean, we've tried, this team as well as our greater team with DHHS and probation, trying to find an alternative here. How can we stay within the scope? How can we provide this, an option to, for the county to build this facility? We need a new facility, we need a new day reporting center. The building they're in right now could be sold at any time, and we would have to move that. And we need more program space. There's a lot of things that we need because of AB 109.
Did we look at buying that? We did look at buying that, but realized it was too much, right?
That's, that would be correct. So the needs are there, and so we definitely have tried to do this. But yes, we're at the point now where we've exhausted all the possibilities. I asked Senator McGuire for some additional state funding, sent a letter to him, and unfortunately, where the state is right now, you know, we're not going to probably get, you know, any kind of relief that way. So, you know, being realistic, the option four is likely the best approach here, and to turn it over to another county.
And I know how much, because I don't know how many times I've been in your office and you say the same thing for the last three years. Talk to the state fire marshal for me, so... But I know you have a lot of other projects going on, so...
Anybody else? Take a motion? So, Mr. Rowe?
See, I hear you just say you recommend option four.
Unfortunately, this is the position we're in, yes.
Yeah, if we can't redesign it to fit within, I don't see where the $9 million comes from. I mean, that's the killer.
That is correct.
And it's really not $9 million, it's really probably 12 or 15, to be honest, right?
That is correct.
With the way we see these costs go, and given our budgets and everything else, I just don't see it, so...
That's right.
I mean, that makes our decision easy, but it certainly doesn't solve the issue of re-entry. I mean, I agree with you Sheriff Hansel that so many people out there in our community actually respond pretty well to being in a program where there's sideboards and everything's kind of all worked out for them. You know, many people respond pretty well to that, even if they're incarcerated.
That's right.
Or in some form of voluntary incarceration or whatever.
Right.
So I absolutely believe in that concept, and I know we don't have nearly enough of it. But I don't see how we come up with the $15 million, you know, to make this happen. And it sounds like you guys have gone through all kinds of iterations on design, trying to figure out how to make something fit. The pandemic, the supply chain, the costs of labor. Everything's gone through the roof. There were some comments in here about pre-qualifying bidders might have hurt us, but it probably doesn't change those underlying components much at all. And we have had some serious problems in other big construction projects, the probation department and other things, where things have gone seriously awry with outside contractors and other things. So, I mean, I wish it was so that we could get something like this done on that property, but I appreciate all the hard work to try and look at every avenue to try and do this. But I mean, I don't know what else we do here.
Right.
So, Mr. Rowe?
I'm not sure if we have public comment already. Are you looking for a motion, though?
I can do a motion, I can do... I haven't done public comment yet. I think there's, is there somebody online, Nick? There is someone?
You got it, go ahead.
Okay. Well, I had a question first. I'm happy to make the motion, but for the recommendation you're bringing forward. But I'm curious about, you know, I know we have expended funds to do work on this. Have any of those been like site preparation work or anything that can translate to, you know, that can be used in the future around site studies or anything like that, geotech-type stuff?
Yes, lot-line adjustments, we've, you know, brownfield studies. There's a lot of things that... Let's just say that money came available for a mental health facility, and we co-located a day reporting center in a mental health facility. That could be a possibility for that location.
Yeah, I mean, I'm trying to find the silver lining here in that, you know, we've done some site evaluation work that isn't going to necessarily be wasted should we find, you know, facility funds in the future. So with that, I'll go ahead and recommend option four, that we, let's see, provide direction to terminate the agreement. Is there anything else that needs to be part of that?
Pretty much covers it.
All right.
I'll second, and then just add in a comment that, you know, I know that if there was a way to bring this project forward, you would have not, you would not be recommending this. And if that was your goal to get this done. And so hopefully, what you said about in the future, maybe a mental health facility being there could be a co-location. And also, knowing that we're not the only county that's in this predicament and going to be returning the money, do you see in the future an option for funds like that possibly coming back if things stabilize? I mean, you don't know, I guess, but...
I don't, but I mean, there is a possibility. I mean, four years ago, we had 1022 money come available, and it was a partial funding. I think it was about $16 million. And the state wouldn't allow us to accept it because we would have to change our project. But ironically, if we had that $16 million, we could fully fund that project now, so...
Wow, okay. Well, thanks for all you guys' hard work, and disappointing very much, I'm sure, more for your department. But once again, just thanks for all the hard work.
And none of these costs considering what it would cost to staff it, too, so...
That's right.
So we're kind of at that point where we have a hiring freeze, so maybe we should have a building freeze at the same time. It's been moved in seconded, Nikki?
We have a couple of comments.
Public comment, I forgot, we got two hands up.
Thank you. Caller 0150*6 to unmute, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, just for the record, it's 0151 that I'm calling from.
Sorry about that.
It's okay, no problem. This is Dottie Russell. Hi, Sheriff Hansel. I'm glad to know that we're working on finding other options than having people released and coming back and then vandalizing or stealing or accosting the rest of us down here in Southern Humboldt. So, in light of me being a victim multiple times, I would like to not return the money and instead to see what we can do to revamp the idea to, instead of having one facility, possibly two or three facilities that are smaller, and maybe tie it into the work group that we had about the tiny house village. So if we did something like that, that would take care of the housing opportunity part, and it would take care of a couple of closer-in-proximity places for people to go to, and for the county to go to, and for the residents to go to. When somebody is breaking the law again after just being released from jail, there should be an easy access way for us as a victim to be able to get help and protection. So I think it's a big mistake to stay with the golden egg and return the money because we didn't get the golden egg instead of going with something that maybe is just an interim step that could ultimately be housing for something else in the future if you get a whole lot of money. So I think it's a big mistake to turn away any money that we can creatively use to stop the crime and help people re-enter into society in a peaceful and gracious way. So that's my opinion. I think it would be a big mistake to turn it down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, caller 7718*6 to unmute, and you will also have three minutes. Caller 7718*6 to unmute, and you will also have three minutes.
Well, Ken Swazki, it's kind of sad to be in this position, obviously. I think we're about $2.3 million and some change into it. You're going to get back, I guess you've already dedicated $7,556, which I guess will go back in your construction funds. I can't see this coming forward with the current economic situations in California. Fantastic project. Unfortunately, it was beautiful, but unfortunately, beauty costs a lot of money. If you're going to redesign this project again to go with, you know, the basic concept, I think you would find that full-on parking the whole bottom floor, and it's not going to be beautiful, but just go ahead and mimic the existing jail structure. Again, it's functioning on form, and every time you look at that picture and you see every little turn and twist in that thing, that adds up rather rapidly. Those of us in construction understand how much we have to charge extra for that. But if you do a redesign, have it something shovel-ready in case an opportunity comes forward at real money, because you're going to have to jump on it within probably one year. Inflation's not going to slow down. In fact, it most likely will ramp up, and so it's an ongoing process. I strongly support you going ahead with your option of four. Thank you for my opportunity to speak, and I'm sorry about the project going away.
Thank you.
Thank you. And there are no more callers?
All right. It's been moved to the second at all those. Nikki, you want to do it?
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah, please.
There's probably other counties in the same position, I'm assuming, that, you know, got funding, but now they don't have enough, and they're going to also be returning money. I'm assuming, but I'll ask, you've had conversations with the state agency about that, and if others are going to return it, can they increase ours, you know, or this and that? And with Senator McGuire as pro temp, great time to leverage, you know, somebody in a powerful position. So have we turned over every stone and had those conversations about what is the state going to do if everybody gives them the money back? How's that all going to work, right? And is there, is there any other kind of option? Have we explored all that?
We have. That's why it's taken us so long to come to you, is because we've explored every single option here.
Yeah.
Appealed to BSCC, talked about money. If there was leftover money, they wouldn't give it to us. They would give it to the next person in line. And we couldn't, we can't change our scope. We couldn't, we couldn't add to the existing project because, you know, it's, this is our existing project. We had $20 million, and that's all they're going to give us for this.
Yeah. I imagine there's other programs in the state that are also experiencing this dilemma from the pandemic and the supply chain, cost increase and everything else. And it's unfortunate these programs don't have some thought-out process to be able to adapt to those kinds of things, because that's the world we're living in now, right?
Yeah.
But again, thank you for your due diligence on turning every stone.
And this is part of the, you know, the goal here, too, is to educate the community, but also educate the board and county staff that AB 109 and that public stage realignment continues to devastate small local governments. And so this was, this was sold to us as a remedy, to provide $20 million for us to build on to help with the cost of AB 109. And then the reality is, we don't even get to spend that money. Reality is, we have all of the problems with none of the remedy.
A lot of it was due to overcrowding in the prisons, which now are not overcrowded because they dumped everybody on the counties, and pandemic cleared out a lot of the prisons as well. And, you know, so there's talk at the state of closing down various prisons because they're underutilized. Wow. And again, stones being turned, I mean, you've looked at all the options of how this might be used other ways, and you mentioned that while this can't be adjusted, there may be other funds for mental health that might be able to be combined into a facility in the future. And so that's kind of where we're looking now, is just keeping our eyes open for opportunity to do other kinds of programs, combine other sources of funds to do what is obviously a needed, needed step-down process, so.
Yes.
Again, thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Chair Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Royal?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
And Supervisor Midron?
Reluctantly, but yes.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Yeah. Thank you, Chair Bone. It is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9D1 in order to discuss existing litigation in the cases of Nationwide Mutual Insurance Company versus County of Humboldt, Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2400490, Rachel Dillon versus County of Humboldt et al., Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2400228, and Ryan Thomas Smith versus Humboldt County Sheriff's Office Correctional Facility, Case Number 24-CV-01035-PHK.
Shall we make public comment on the closed session items?
We do have a caller in the queue, Chair Bone. Caller 7718*6 to unmute. You'll have three minutes.
Only one comment regarding the insurance company. They're all throwing us under the bus. We can't get insurance on anything. If there's any way you guys can make them not continue to do that or sock it to them, you have everybody a blessing, I think, in the whole area. Thanks for coming up with your opportunity to speak.
We're on it. Thanks. With that, we are going into closed session immediately. Mr. Miles?
Thank you, Chair Bone. With regard to items K1 through K3, the board voted 4-0 with Supervisor Wilson absent to authorize the Humboldt County Council's office to defend the County of Humboldt in the cases of Nationwide Mutual Insurance Company versus County of Humboldt, Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2400490, Rachel Dillon versus County of Humboldt et al., Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2400228, and Ryan Thomas Smith versus Humboldt County Sheriff's Office Correctional Facility, Case Number 24-CV-01035-PHK.
And with that, seeing the overwhelming support for adjournment, and remembering we are adjourning in the memory of Eugene Ed Denson, call it a day.